Thank you. Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here this evening for Mayor and City Council Resolution 23-0383, Operating Budget for the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2024. Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. On my right, immediate right, staff to the Committee, Marguerite Curran. Councilman James Torrance, 7th District. Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District. Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, 6th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Antonio Glover, 13th District. To my immediate left, Council President Nick Mosby stepped out for one second. He'll be right back. Council Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Member of the Committee. And Councilman Mark Conway, 4th District. We also have representatives from Mayor Brandon Scott's office as well as Council President Nick Mosby's office. We're here tonight for Baltimore City Public School System. Dr. Santa Lysas, we have a... How many slides are in your deck this evening? You don't have to get up because we have the new technology at each desk now. Some might call this a 21st century building. Dr. Santa Lysas, how many slides is the deck?
Twenty-three slides, sir.
Twenty-three slides. How much time do you anticipate needing for the presentation?
No longer than 30 and hopefully under that.
Colleagues, a couple of ground rules for this evening. We're going to do one question per person. It is late in the day. We're on the third day of a six-day stretch of 72-plus hours of hearings. We're going to be brief in our questions. We're not going to make speeches. If it veers into speech territory, I will cut you off on the first time. We are going to ask our questions succinctly. Dr. Santa Lysas, I'm going to ask that you and your staff answer questions directly and succinctly, as you always do. And we are not going to... We are going to grossly limit back-and-forth exchange between the council member who is asking the question and members of the school system that are here this evening. We'll do a one-question limit per person. We will rotate through in the order that we start. Colleagues, are there any questions on the ground rules for this evening? Seeing that there are none, Dr. Santa Lysas, before you kick off your presentation, if you would kindly introduce each member of your staff, first and last name and their position title. It'll only be necessary for the individuals sitting in the council member seats that are going to be testifying this evening and then jump right into your presentation. Marguerite, if you could please expand the presentation on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Costello. It is a privilege to be here with the City Council this evening. And I want to also say good evening to all of the council members in attendance. As you noted before I begin, I'd like to recognize the members of my team who are here with me. I'm going to ask those members to raise your hands to indicate who you are for our City Council members. We have with us tonight Dr. Joan Dobrowski, Chief Academic Officer. We have John Davis, Chief of Schools. We have Chris Dougherty, Chief Financial Officer. We have Tina Highcup, Chief of Communications, Engagement and Enrollment. We have Teresa Jones, Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer. Tommy Jones, Chief Information Technology Officer. Emily Nielsen, Chief Human Capital Officer. Allison Perkins-Cohen, Chief of Staff. Do we have Dr. Lynette Washington this evening?
She's back here.
Okay. Oh, yeah. And so there's a seat up front for Dr. Lynette Washington, who is our Chief Operating Officer. I'm also joined this evening by Melissa Broome and Dewana Stewart, representing our legislative team, and Kim Hoffman, who is our Executive Director of Data Monitoring and Compliance. So with that said, I will launch into tonight's presentation for this evening. So one of the... And Marguerite gave me very good instructions. Am I pointing the right place, ma'am? Thank you. So by way of getting started, we just wanted to make sure to remind us all that in 2018, due to systemic underfunding, city schools actually faced $130 million budget gap. And we think it is worth noting that through the advocacy of members of this council as well as state advocates, state elected officials, and most importantly, our entire community, that that three-year bridge to Kerwin commitment from the Kerwin legislation actually provided... It is providing approximately $60 million per year in funds and services from fiscal year 1820. Some of you may remember this report we put out, which was investing in our future to really give a picture of the real-life ground implications of the Kerwin legislation. I think the other piece that's worth noting is that the State Department's Legislative Services in fiscal year 2017 concluded that an additional $342 million would be required annually to achieve adequacy within Baltimore city schools. I think it's also important to note that beyond Baltimore City and the state of Maryland, we also had some national contexts that really highlighted Maryland's position nationwide as actually a state that was, dare I say, somewhat regressive in its funding of young people's education with high concentrations of students of color as well as students from poverty. So I think one of the things that's important to see, because a lot of times the questions that we get are, "So where does all the money go? What is all the money paid for? Does money really make a difference?" And since I know many members of this council know the commitment and really the drive from large numbers of our families and community and even teachers themselves to make sure that we invest more in the arts. We have... We've actually partnered with a lot of arts advocacy organizations in Baltimore City. I met with one of the student arts advocacy groups just an hour ago, actually. And one of the things we cited was this chart in and of itself. And I think part of why I wanted to bring this as context is to show that when we have the money, we actually are investing and do invest in places that have meaningful impact for young people. And if you take a look, you'll see now with this school year, this fiscal year school year, at 275 certified fine arts teachers, we now actually exceed the amount the district had just about 10 years ago. And a lot of the dips in the hiring of fine arts teachers directly correspond to the years where we saw funding challenges. I think the other piece that you'll see is the actual direct impact of the funding in the arts. And you'll see that within the last three years, where we've increased funding to city schools, we've also increased in areas such as visual art and music. And while we see upticks in both dance and the drama theater categories, we're still not at a place where we're comfortable in saying that every young person who wants access to dance and drama and theater can have that. But really, the point of my illustration is that arts gets a lot of attention, the need for increased investment. And I think what I'm really want... The point I want to make is that when city schools has had the finances, we have in fact invested in the areas that are young people and our families say matter most, and arts is just one of those examples. Now, moving forward to this year, just by way of reminding the council and the public that there are three primary areas that generate the revenue for city schools. You'll see the largest area represented in that dark/royal blue are our general funds. And this is where the majority of the district funds sit. Then you'll also see within the orange, restricted funds. Those come with greater restrictions on spending. And those... An example of that would be Title I. And then the third area, which is a small but significant enough sliver, is enterprise funds. And these are the federally reimbursed funds specifically for food services. And actually, that small number doesn't even equate to the investment that we as city schools need and do make, frankly, to that area. You'll also see that some of the restricted funds have a... Or you should note that some of the restricted funds have a spending window that really spans multiple years. I think the one that's drawn the most attention recently, an example of that would be the SRR3 or ARP dollars, which can be spent all the way through September 30, 2024. I think it's also important to note that with the influx of Kerwin funding, by way of reminder, that the Kerwin funding comes very much aligned to categories. It is not just additional money that gets added to our budget to spend as we would like, but it actually comes with different areas in which Kerwin funding needs to be spent. A great example of that you'll see is pre-kindergarten. And this is an area where city schools has long, over the decade-plus, made investments, and Kerwin actually directs funding there. I think you'll also see things like the concentration of poverty dollars, which we often give a lot of attention to because these are the dollars that large numbers of our schools receive where there is greater flexibility for investment. But again, I think it's just important for us all to note that Kerwin funding is actually allocated along categories. I think the source of the funding is also important by way of reminder and context setting. This chart shows that the overwhelming majority of our funding is still directed through the state. You'll see the figure there at 998 million. You will also note the City of Baltimore's contribution, which is 28% of our budget. And the other sources, which includes federal sources, such as E-Rate, makes up about 1% of all of city schools' revenue. I think another important piece to bring into view, and these are particularly notable areas, are the areas of special education and pre-K because these are areas where the state allocation of funds is far under what we actually spend in those areas. So what that means when you look at the allocations in terms of what we actually receive relative to the cost of something like special education, it's important for the council to note that the total district expenditure, for example, in special education is about $300 million. But the revenue we receive for that expense is not even half of that. It's only $114 million. So it's important to note that that $186 million difference comes directly out of general funds. So that means that is money that could be going to other areas but that we direct from our general funds to make up the gap between what we receive in general funds and what is actually... Excuse me, in categorical funds that is actually needed. The same is true for pre-K. And I think in both areas, what it represents is the fact that we know those young people need and deserve those services. And so even when the state comes short, even when the revenue comes short, we take from our most flexible funding to fund those areas. It's also important to note, because we know that one of the questions that often comes up as well is the money actually going to the schools? Is the money actually going to support young people, teachers, staff? And so this graph gives the council and the public a breakdown of the 88% of funds that go to schools or are budgeted central dollars that go to support schools. So what you'll see here is that overwhelmingly, just about three-quarters of all general funds are in principal-controlled budgets. You'll see other places here. Central Office is 5%, which is still among one of the lowest in the state by way of percentages. And I think it's important to also know when we say centrally-budgeted support, some of the areas we're referencing are things like school police, transportation, some of the work that we do, for example, with through the Chief Academic Officers Office that might like AP that might actually benefit schools and students but is budgeted centrally, all the way to things like utilities. So when we say centrally-budgeted school support, it's important to keep in mind that a lot of those dollars are still directly supporting schools. With regards to SRR funds, there's been a lot of attention, both here and nationally, around the expenditure of the federal dollars. You'll see here with regards to SRR funds that as of March 27th, more than half of the SRR funds granted to the district have been spent or encumbered. So we know that a lot of the narrative and questions are, "Why are districts not spending? Where's the money going?" Well, I think we can be proud that here within Baltimore city schools, you'll see that we have a very targeted and intentional approach of spending the money that expires first, soonest, and actually spreading out over years the money that runs out, frankly, or the timing on that is much later. So you'll see that that First CARES Act, when people talk about unspent dollars here in city schools, 100% of those dollars have been spent from that grant. And this was, just by way of reminder, that early money we spent for virtual and in-person learning supports when we were first encountering the pandemic, all the way up to SRR3, or as we know that, money to be named as ARP. What you'll see is that much more of this grant is for the actual acceleration of student learning in terms of enrichment, academic supports, professional development. And you'll see that's money we're spending now. So that is all by way of context setting. And this slide is basically to give you an overview of where current city schools' budget investment highlights are for this year in four key areas: academics, leadership, wholeness, and infrastructure. So I will go through these fairly quickly to keep my promise to Councilman Costello that we'll keep it within time. But I think it'll be helpful to give the council and the public some ideas of where we've prioritized. So some examples of investments with academics you'll see here. We have a $25 million investment in high-dosage tutoring. And this is an investment where, I will say, we've also done work in weaning out where are the tutoring partnerships where we're seeing the greatest impact and those that are not. I am proud to report, just as one small but significant example, and I reported this in a national meeting in Chicago and another one in DC, that actually our most successful in terms of impact for students tutoring program is actually our homegrown tutoring that uses Baltimore City's own paraprofessionals, many of whom, the overwhelming majority of whom, are public city school residents. And that tutoring program has shown to be actually some of the greatest impact. I'll also note the summer and extended learning investment is $45 million, right? So $45 million is going to support summer programming that will continue even this year from 2023-24. I'll just hold up the... Chief Perkins-Cohen is holding up. You all have a brochure with a QR code or a flyer with a QR code. So if you or any of your constituents want to know what's available, that is where our $45 million investment is going. And that is to provide a record number of summer learning opportunities for city schools' students. Some other examples of investments that I'd like to highlight, again, you'll see both in pre-K curriculum as well as in the fine arts. So again, I think that's significant because some of what we have seen, what I showed in the earlier slides about the ongoing investment we are continuing this year. And so you'll see an additional $1.9 million investment, that this is really geared towards the school level and uses... Makes use, is one example of the use of those concentration of poverty dollars I highlighted earlier. There's some other examples here. You'll see our secondary success and innovation work. This is really focusing on scaling across high schools, our support to ninth-grade students as well as postgraduate counseling and helping to get young people a plan for when they graduate. We've seen success in the small number of schools where we've invested. This investment here reflects a district-wide expansion of the success that we've seen in some of those other supports. The other area, another area, are our investments in leadership. A big area of investment for us that's directly tied to our academic acceleration and one where we, as a city, lagged actually. And a lot of that, again, was due to funding. What you'll see here is an investment in literacy and math coaching across the district. I know in years past, some of the questions I would get from council members is, "Well, how come one school in, you know, in my area has a coach but another school doesn't?" This is a way that we are, again, using that newly arrived Kerwin money to make sure that we are equalizing that opportunity and that support across the district. You'll also see an investment in professional development as our teachers continue to tell us that the additional challenges in schools require additional levels of support for them. Moving forward, you'll also see a continued investment in our area of wholeness. So one area within wholeness is mental health. And that's something that many of our community partners ask about. Clearly, our young people and our families continue to... In every survey we give, it gets high ranking. What you'll see here is an expansion, an investment of $7 million in our expanded school behavioral health program. We have found a great success in those schools that use that approach because frankly, it's a team approach to providing mental health that extends some of the earlier investments we've made in school psychologists, school counselors, and the like. And you'll also see some other investments to continue to build out our advisory programs and other things to proactively help students with their emotions and social-emotional well-being. Continuing wholeness, one of the things that I also think is important to note on this slide, and again, these are just some examples, but I think is worthy of notation, is first, the continual building out of helping to support our young people returning from the juvenile justice system and a lot of work that Roger Shaw has led under Chief Davis's leadership and really helping to tighten the connections between youth that are re-entering schools, who have come through the justice system and making sure that that's a stronger connection, as well as what you'll see is a $2.4 million investment in the increased number of homeless students that we are seeing in the schools and that we know you are seeing across the city. I think another area of wholeness, one of the things I've been big on is that our definition of wholeness is not just about mental health. Mental health is important and critical, but it is not sufficient. And so part of where you will see a large investment, which is building on some of the success we've had, is an additional $2 million investment in athletics. Most notably, in that number, our middle school athletics, which frankly have been non-existent or if not non-existent, severely emaciated over the years, that we've really focused on building back as a way of engaging young people, giving young people frankly, a reason to be in school. And we know that early adolescents that actually have something productive to do are much more likely to continue doing that productive activity throughout high school rather than getting derailed or distracted by negative influences. You'll also see, and again, because I'm keeping track of time, you'll also see here with regards to wholeness, the continued attention to facilities. That despite the gap that the state has noted over and over again in facilities, we continue to prioritize. And even though we don't have all of the money we like, we would like to have, we do continue to invest significant portions of our budget. So what you'll see is a $6.8 million investment in the upgrading of health suites, which we heard continually from teachers, school staff, was very important. You'll also see the increase in maintenance workers to help... To basically help accelerate in terms of speed as well as responsiveness to a lot of the school-based needs within the maintenance of buildings. And I've been spending time with small groups of principals and CLNs the last few weeks. And one of the areas they continually note is the improved responsiveness in some of their facilities requests. And again, a lot of that is connected to the ability to invest more resources in the response time. We're still way under other jurisdictions in the state, but again, we have made ground. Then... Great. Finally, my final slide is just, again, the investments that we have in infrastructure. You will see here, and I know that many members of City Council have noted kind of the need to build on some of what we saw in terms of investments during the pandemic in technology, building out our young people's access to technology, expanding Wi-Fi strength. And so I would highlight on this sheet an investment of an additional $4 million in this area to help continue to build on some of the investments that were made while we were primarily in virtual learning. And so with that, yes, I am under my time. I hit my 30-minute mark. And I would respectfully turn... I can turn it back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Madam CEO. The deputy council member from the 7th District's birthday is today, so we're going to allow Councilman Torrance to go first so he can get home to his amazing son.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Jace loves you for that. So Dr. Santa Lysas, I'm just going to hit you with a question. And then I have a series of nine requests today to city schools, respectfully across this grade span, across the span for academics as well as athletics in terms of after-school programming. Sorry. So I'm going to give you one question, and then I'm going to hit you with nine requests.
Okay, so do you not want me to answer the question? You want me to just take the request?
You can answer the question, but I just want to make sure staff get the nine requests so I can leave and get to Jace. Better yet, I'll start with the requests. The first request is related to paraprofessionals in their salary alignment. Since they are the persons who are handling the high-dosis tutoring, I think we need to make a significant investment into their salaries, especially in the non-instructural pairs. So I request to see what studies we're going to do to actually align their pay. They actually make less than what the average cost of living is in the city of Baltimore, which is less than $54,000. Case in point, I know pairs who make $32,000 a year. So I want to know how we can align that pay and also get them to salary employees. That's my first request. Second request is related to wholeness funds and how are we using them to leverage supports from programs in our schools, especially with the Baltimore City Youth Fund? How we can use the Youth Fund? And this is a request for briefing with the Youth Fund as well. How we can use the Youth Fund to do evaluations so that these small organizations who are standing, being stood up by Black and Brown people in our schools, qualify for grant funding through the city schools in some way that we can partner together on that? So this is both collaborative but also deep dive. In relationship to the high-dosis tutoring, I would like to see the data by also vendors as well as our professionals by school. But also, I want to see what paraprofes... Wait, sorry, excuse me. What schools are seeing successes and not seeing successes and seeing what planning we are supporting our principals in terms of getting the assistance to their teachers. The next request, athletics. Exclusion of 5th graders in athletics in terms of elementary school. I would like to see what the plan is for middle school athletics as well as athletics for the 5th graders in elementary school. I'm not going too fast for y'all.
I think they're scribing nicely.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Nate, are we good?
You good, Nate? All right, next. The next one is going to be very detailed. I know we had a number of Kerwin positions that were given to us and we knew that we were unlikely, because of the teacher crisis, would not fill them. Schools were given guidance last summer in terms of how to repack. Schools were given guidance last summer in terms of how to repurpose those funds. I want to know how those funds are actually allocated after we closed out the books after September 30th. And how we supported the schools in terms of technology, enrichment, any physical infrastructure improvements to the actual schools. I just want to make sure that while we receive those funds, we put them to purposeful use. The other thing is I want to look at our teacher pipeline. I'm going to be frank for the public, I am a strong supporter of urban teachers because persons come in duly certified. I want to see how we can improve that pipeline because special education is an unfunded mandate. And in the city of Baltimore, I'm just being frank so that everyone knows, you saw that from that. So I just want to make sure how we're prioritizing that. And then the last request is figuring out where are we in terms of finding stable leadership for the office of special education. It is a huge concern for me as a person who had dyslexia, who understands the improvement that our young people can make when someone is investing in them. And taking time in those actual classrooms. I think that was all nine, if not, I will email you the rest. All right, so here's the.
So before you go to your question, I guess many of the things will take several degrees of dialogue. The expectation is that they just follow up eventually with you, Ms. Councilman.
I'll put like this, Melissa, we'll talk.
All right, so so there's no hard, there's no hard date on any of those at this point.
So we last year met the deadline of September 1st. I'm willing to keep that same deadline because I do know that you do have to stand up summer programming as well as staff will be working four days a week. I don't want to add any extra stress, especially when you're closing out your buildings to get this information to you.
No, I think that's fine, and the only thing I would, I would add Councilman Torrance, and we will definitely caucus with Melissa and make sure. But I also saw chiefs writing down and noting, so that should help. I will just note that some of the, some of the pieces we will absolutely need to follow up and discuss is what data is actually available. So there's some cuts on the data that you asked for. And you know this as well as I do that you might not get all the cuts the way you want them, but absolutely, we will follow up with you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Did you have a question?
Here's my question.
Okay.
This isn't, and I think this is where. This is something I struggle with with dealing and talking to my principals about the broader vision of the district. We have teacher burnout, we have principal burnout. My question is, yes, my question is related to the overall morale of staff and supporting families. I want to know after looking at this presentation, how are we connecting it all so that everyone's on the same page? I see, and I say this because, and this is more broadly the community outreach and understanding both internal stakeholders and external. Because I hear two things, especially with individualized learning plans, they're great for some and not for it all, right? So I want to make sure that for the next school year, we're thinking about the engagement externally with honest conversations about what things are working in the district. And my next question is simply this, can we have a commitment to have a briefing on where things are in terms of. How we engaging all of our stakeholders from our union partners to our families. To external partners who we know cannot stand up the supports that we need and how we're going to strategically work with them. All I wanted was a commitment.
Sure.
Thank you, that's it, you're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stokes.
Hello, Dr. Santa Lisa, I just have a question, and I'm glad to see additional $7 million in there for mental health. Can you tell us exactly what their plan is and what schools that's going to benefit from there because I think that's important. Our mental health issue didn't start before when COVID came, it was there before. I'm glad to see that additional $7 million for our young people to address our mental health in our schools.
Great, no, thank you, Councilman Stokes. I would ask Chief Davis, would you like to jump in with that?
Sure, let me make sure I'm touching the right button, the one on the right. So the $7 million is really around our expanded school behavior health program. And it right now serves 131 schools. This has been something that has progressed literally over the decades because it is a decades long program that started really, really small. By a former director that just retired last year. And so we are always working with partners, we had five of them and we increased that to seven. And that will increase the capacity that they can also put clinicians into schools. So we don't quite cover all the district, but we cover 131 of the schools, and I'm sure we can get that list to you.
Thank you, that was my request, Mr. Chair, just give us a list of those schools that are going to be addressing a lot of trauma. Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nate, you got that, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Madam CEO, for your presentation and for everyone coming out tonight. Absenteeism, intruency officers, can you talk to us about that? I know that coming out, we're going to have a hearing, just an informational hearing to try to go over. Go over past results and like where we are, as well as applying it to longitudinal data that the state has aggressively gone after. We were able to do that when I was in the delegation. But you know, where we are today with the reality of we're coming out of COVID, right? And we know COVID had a tremendous impact, not only with folks showing up to work, but more importantly, children coming to school. And so this is not, and I got you, this is just like looking at where we are from a reality perspective. To see what we can better do as a city council, particularly through the budget, to ensure that we're putting the proper things in place. Truancy officers, you know, I know we've already, we constantly talked about the enhancement of programming to lure our kids and keep our kids and connect them. To the school setting. So just really want to try to understand like where we are, what's the plan? And I know you are probably a scholar on this. The empirical data associated with particularly young kids, elementary school kids and the pipelines that lead them when they're not coming to school. You know, our second graders that are missing 40% of the school, 50% of the school, the reality is it's not the teacher's fault. It's not the school system's fault, it's not city council's fault, it might not even the parents' fault, but as a city, we got to wrap our hands around them and ensure. That we put them into pipelines of success and missing school very early on is problematic. So just if you could kind of tell us overall from an absenteeism perspective, what's the approach in this budget? Is there any additional resources that we need to apply to this budget, but really try aggressively go after particularly elementary school absenteeism?
Sorry, wrong button, I'm getting used to the new buttons. No, and and thank you for that, Council President, because we actually are kind of doubling our efforts on absenteeism. Our chronic absentee rate more than doubled, right? So even before, that's right, so even before COVID, we as a district had a lot of work to do with regard to chronic absenteeism with the doubling of that rate. Which of course, we've started to see come down, but you're still talking about close to half of students in Baltimore city schools. Are chronically absent, which means you know, they're missing at the low end 20 days of school and to your point, in some cases, far more than that. So some of what we're doing, I would say is one, doing a closer continuous review of the data in real time. We have had more direct support to principals around what they can do there. We've mobilized schools and some of you may have seen some on social media. But I would say this year, our, for example, our 60 day challenge around attendance was something that we mobilized schools around. And then with regards to your question about investment, what you'll see in this budget is really increased staffing. At the school level in 64 schools that this budget represents specifically to have either attendance monitors. In schools, what we have found is where there is a dedicated staff person who literally is laser focused on attendance. And you see in schools like, for example, Tench Tillman, where you have that kind of focused attention on attendance. Someone to actually monitor and work with it, you actually see large cuts in those chronic absentee rates. So in this budget, you'll see more of those, you'll also see with regards to some of the success of the work we've done is last summer. We actually had summer attendance workers who spent the time between now or when school closes and when school is opening. We found we had far more engagement of families, far more ability to get to young people who were in danger of being chronically absent. Or at risk of being chronically absent. And so you'll see in this budget reflected in expansion of that work and the extension of that work beyond summer. So one of the things when I met with Chief Davis and our wholeness team and our attendance team, one of the things that became very evident was. You know, we had things that were successful over the summer or in a small number of schools, we would stop it or keep it in the small number of schools. But what the increased funding allows us to do is to say, well, then why not expand it further? So you'll also see that investment of actual people on the ground to do that. And then you'll also see, we've just begun through Chief High Cupboard and our communications director. Excuse me, Andre Riley is working with the mayor's office and it's in an area that certainly city council. If you'd like to get involved, but we are working collaboratively with the city for a year long attendance campaign. So working together with a variety of agencies to really come up with a campaign to push for attendance. Not just in one period of time, but across the school year. And then the other piece I would say is that we're finding that a lot of our partners who we're partnering with. Both through kind of community schools and reaching that, but also through our reengagement office and some of what we're seeing. Is that our partners who actually, yes, are connecting with young people who have the profile or who are chronically absent. But also with their families, and it gets back to something we've talked about a number of times here and in other places. That that support of families is also necessary to really combat chronic absenteeism. So those are some of the things that we're investing in.
The 64 attendance monitors, are they new positions?
Go ahead, John.
So the additional folks that we have are going to support 64 schools, right? Staff have, schools have, I think it's about 25 of them have added registrars to their schools. And we've been promoting that so that there is additional support.
So 25 in fiscal, 24?
That's exactly right.
25 addition?
Yes, we still have to hire them, we still have to go through it.
Understood.
The 64 is really around making sure that we've got some central office staff that can go out to schools every day. And case manage the most difficult cases with our schools to give schools additional support.
How many staff members is that?
That ends up being four staff members.
So a total of 29?
Yes, I do want to double check the registrar number, I'm going off the top of my head.
Yeah, we won't.
The other thing that I would mention in this space is from COVID two years ago to March, where we had to send in official early. It's called an early attendance report to the state. We are up three percentage points in our overall attendance. Three percentage points doesn't necessarily sound like a lot, but it's an extra 2,000 students every day that are coming to school. I'm not trying to claim victory, all the double downing that Dr. Santa Lisa's mentioned and that you're advocating for as well, we completely agree with. But we have started to make some progress in that, and we think the additional support and positions will be a big factor.
So in the classic role and responsibility of someone that's in truancy, that's what those 29 would do? Or are they added support over what truancy officers would do?
So let me be clear, we don't have truancy officers, right? We do have some cases that are referred to us from schools and we take them to truancy court. I think the number was over 100 this past year, but again, that's another data point we would have to get for you. So we do have some families that we take to truancy court if we've tried to work with them time and time again, and we haven't seen any change.
So is it basically like an ideological decision not to have truancy officers or like, or do you think there's a need? Do we feel like we have all that we are adequately, are we adequately supplying personnel to kind of ensure we're getting young folks in school?
I mean, we are, the investment is is a lot, right? Both on the school level and for central office. I think anybody can push for more and I can understand that. But I think for where we are right now and some of the initial progress that we've seen, I think this is the right course of action.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President Milton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One's a request, and then I have the question. Earlier, earlier today, we had the Department of Transportation with us. And I guess to coincide with my colleague, Councilman Conway of the Fourth District had brought up. To DOT about apprenticeship and so on, and I think it's a, this is a good time to reach out to. Director Johnson and the Labor Commissioner to try to see if some pre apprenticeship programs can be developed. She did mention partnerships with schools. So I know that, you know, things like their fleet department with the auto mechanics, it's. I think this would be a good pipeline to reach 11th, 12th graders and then eventually preparing them to get into these jobs. I recently basically found out that, you know, our city government retirement rate is like 40 people every month that are retiring. So we're really in need of finding laborers and you know, people that need jobs and good benefits. And this is, this would be a nice segue for that. And just letting you know too, and a reminder that for people that don't know, that Baltimore city was the first. Government agency in the country to start apprenticeship programs with government, with government agencies. Which started with the water and wastewater and DPW, which we still have that that program. So I think this is an excellent time to start, especially work with DPW and the one that they already have started. And you can create some other things and partner with the state with this. They, the state hires, they have specialists that work, that their job is to work with you to create the apprenticeship program. If you partner with the state doing that, that's that's state funding as well to help assist with that. So, and then the city has a person, I think they just recently retired and that's a position probably open to that. You know, attends the state board meetings and so on. So it's important that we get that Baltimore city thing started again through these pre apprenticeship programs. So that's, so the request is asking you to please contact those two people. And I'd like to see something set up, start that dialogue and work now. For it's an easy program to set up and get approved through the state. And these students, after they get their, get out of high school, they can get a certificate that's like a four year college certificate. And we have students, I'm sure, that need that direction. So the question is, I know that a number of schools now are, you know, getting murals on their buildings and things. And some principals are partnering with organizations that are funding and putting those murals on these walls. Is there a, do you have a process set up for putting murals on school buildings? Is it, do they go through the real estate office or it's clearly principal approval?
So I am going to let our chief operating officer, Dr. Washington, take that question.
Okay, so yes, we do have a process and it's not merely just principals. So we have an internal team of folks that represent across some of our other departments, particularly our facilities team. And then we would have people from some of our other internal departments who will, there's a submission process where the principal, the school and the partner. Will submit the design and then the team will actually do a review with a number of different criteria. I don't really remember the criteria, but I can submit it for you. There's a number of different things that they look at because it is again, public facing. And so once that review process is done, there is approval or there is further review or things that need to be done for the project to be approved.
Okay, I would, I think that's a good idea if we, if the committee, if we get a copy of that policy. Because I'm, you know, communities now are really trying to help make schools a part of their community and they want to. They'll come up with a mural idea and just think that, you know, hey, this is what we want on this building in there. And hearing that you have a process, we want to make sure they go through that process. that you have a process, we want to make sure they go through that process without any problems.
Thank you. Councilman Schleifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one topic. I mean, I've, obviously, there's ongoing things all the time, but your staff's been very responsive, you and your staff, when it comes to different specific questions at individual schools in my district, or schools that are moving to the district. So I'm going to save all that for private conversations. There is one issue that I want to get some clarity on, and it is a hill, probably the first hill, and the only hill I'm willing to die on. And so I just want you to understand the severity of what I'm, what I'm about to discuss. How many students are part of this special education model?
When you say this special education model, could you just clarify, please?
So I'm assuming this is the correct line item, but I'm looking more about the students that have certain IEPs or special education things. Is that, is that that line item in the budget, or is that another line?
So what I can do is go back to, I think it was slide, slide 10, Councilman, if you have that?
Okay.
So if you, if you look at slide 10, the total district cost, oh, thank you. Total district cost, as we bring it up.
It's a delay.
Yes.
I have it in front of me. So is it, is it this 300, this 300 million, is that the total cost district-wide?
That is the total district cost to support young people with disabilities, which includes students who have IEPs, students who have 504 plans, and students who are in our special education, like specialized schools like the Bear School or Claremont.
Gotcha. So that includes anything as small as a kid who needs to be pulled out of class for additional help versus a kid who needs to be sent to a special program elsewhere? Is that correct?
Yes, but it's also the designation of support that the young person has. So when you say a student that's pulled out of a class, a student could be pulled out of a class for additional support without an IEP. So that's why I'm using those plans, right, the district.
So how many students are in, encompass this $300 million that's being spent?
Oh, I'd have to get you those numbers. I mean, I do percentage-wise, I think we're what, are we at like 20?
14%.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought.
How, I couldn't, I can't hear you.
10 to 11,000 students.
Okay. So that's, that's about $27,000 on average per student. Obviously, some of them are significantly higher and some are significantly lower. So, you know, one thing story I hear repeatedly over and over and over again is that the only way to get these services, if you have a real issue, is you have to sue the district. I don't need to get into the weeds of how many lawsuits there are or anything like that.
Sure.
As far as I'm concerned, you know, there's very few situations we've come across as elected officials where it's like, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, right? And so I have a situation that I've been working for a constituent of mine who has a one-in-a-million-plus disorder that's lifetime, that's never changing. The school system put this student into the correct placement that they needed, and now that placement is pulled out from underneath him. And now lawsuits after lawsuits after lawsuits. I read some of the correspondence. I couldn't believe what I was looking at. What are we, what are we supposed to do on our end in a situation like that?
So I think from, from your end, one, I want to just, again, just remind generally what I'm sure you already know, that one, once something reaches a legal threshold, it's a legal case, so I can't discuss that without counsel. So I do just want to kind of set that boundary. I think the second piece that we found is working with our parent response unit. That would be the first place that a parent would go. And there are a number of steps along the way. So part of what we seek to understand, and Chief Tabrowski, if you'd like to weigh in, you can, but one of the things that we seek to understand, and this was true even when I was not in this role and I was in the chief academic officer role, is frankly, a lot of it is determining what are the services that a young person needs based on their disability, and for what period of time, and what level of intensity, meaning time and dosage. So part of, you know, and again, I can't speak to the specific case, but part of what we did, we made a lot of investment in for a number of years, and even when I returned in my first two years in this role, was in making sure that we worked with CCAC, which is our special education advisor, parent advisory council, and they do a lot of work in helping to educate parents about their rights, and they do a lot of negotiation kind of with, and I mean informal negotiation, not like union negotiation, right, with the district in helping to get parents what they need. Now, I will say this, oftentimes when there is a switch in service, and again, I can't speak to the specific case because I frankly don't have the context, but in some cases, after a period of time, a support is determined as either not necessary at the level that it was previously, or that it is delivered in a different way. Not knowing the particulars of this case, I can't really speak to which one, but it is not unheard of. And actually, it should be probably more frequent than it is that we actually revisit the services as initially indicated and described in that original IEP and in that original plan for care. But again, that runs the gamut of a young person at the Bear School who has a spinal cord injury, all the way to someone like one of my three daughters who needs more support through a 504 for, you know, executive functioning. So when we talk about special education, there's a broad range of who we're talking about. And in some cases, the supports change over time. So a young person might receive a support in fifth grade that changes when they're entering ninth grade. But more than happy, Councilman, in the case of this particular constituent of yours, to, you know, look into it, to work with you on that. Again, when cases go to litigation, I am kind of bound by what I discuss publicly, but more than happy to follow up with you on that.
And I appreciate that. And, you know, I'm not trying to get into the weeds on the specific thing, but just in hearing those numbers, and they are pretty staggering that there's that many students, just the sheer number, 11,000, 12,000 students, I don't even need to know how many people are in that office to know that there is no way that you can possibly review that. I just know based on our constituent requests that we get, and those are for low-level things, the issues that come with special education are far more complex than those kind of issues. There is no way there's enough staff in that agency to properly review that many applications. And so I'm just going to leave it with this. My primary concern is that families who need these services, a lot of them, the fact that they're in a predicament like that, their, any disposable income they have is already gone because that child needs other services as well. So the fact that I repeatedly hear people having to sue the system for services honestly makes me sick because these are like the people who need the help the most. But then, just to close this piece, once somebody is getting services and it's working, and for whatever reason you guys feel like it needs to be reevaluated, while there's pending litigation on it, I genuinely believe the right thing to do is to keep that person in those services until the final ruling has come down. Just as, and not to compare it, but if somebody's challenging a water bill, their house doesn't, isn't supposed to go to tax sale while they're debating that and dealing with that with DPW. And so to pull a kid out of services, that could be a matter of life and death depending on the severity. And so is that a policy now that students can stay in those services while it's going on, or you guys have that say, and they have to then?
It depends on the litigation, Councilman. It varies from case to case. And so that's why I'm saying, and it's not to be obstinate, it's to say, it does vary case by case, which is why individualized educational plans are developed for each young person, because the particulars of the case, and again, you know, like you, I'm not in this business, I'm not in this line of work to deny services for young people. I will also say there is a history within Baltimore City of frankly giving more services to young people that sometimes upon reevaluation are no longer needed as the, as the young person progresses. But I don't know this individual case. So again, if you're talking about a young person with a spinal cord injury who is in the same physical state they were five to six years ago, clearly my response would be different. The other piece I will note, and I think it is the unfortunate byproduct of living in a litigious, frankly, Western country, is that the level of legal action requires that each case gets viewed for where we bear responsibility while the case is being deliberated, and where we bear responsibility once the case has been decided. That being said, clearly, right, I'm not out to deny young people service. It's why we spend double what the state gives us. To be blunt, if we did not spend double, there would be far greater numbers of young people not receiving services. We actually take from general education students to support at twice the rate that we are reimbursed for students with disabilities. So I don't think it is about commitment, but I do think it is about the particulars of the case, and it is. And I, you know, I will say, sometimes we have cases that where the, where the responsiveness, I would probably agree with you, is not what it should be for a member of the public or for a family. And that's why we work with our special education parent response team so that they can give us feedback on, well, you were a little off, right, on this one and how you responded to a family. But I don't think, and I know it is not, again, it's demonstrated by the budget you have in front of you, it is not because of ill intent.
So can we, can we take this specific case offline?
Absolutely.
And Councilman, can you reach out to Allison, and we can facilitate a meeting with, with the CEO to talk about this one directly? She can have legal counsel present, and then we can have a more substantive conversation.
That sounds good. And I think we're more than a little off on this one, but we'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Councilman Glover?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, so prior to me coming into this administration, we had a rec center, Collerton Square, that's attached to one of your schools, that's been closed maybe for, I want to say closed about six years. We had an opportunity to open the rec center, which we've done with the Broadway East community. And I just want to know, what is the protocol for us, the community, to have access to the gym, which is a part of the school? We were there in the evening, the gym isn't being used in the evening. Is there a way that we can communicate through you guys with the principals so we can have access to the gym? Because we do have professional basketball players that are willing to come and do some things with our children in our neighborhood.
No, thank you, Councilman. I will ask Dr. Washington to start, and then, you know, I can have commentary after. But Dr. Washington?
And so again, just like with public art, we have a process. For the general public, the process, you go on, there's a link on our website if you want to use space. Usually what people would do is they will go through that request. That request will come to both the office and also to the principal, because the principal definitely does have to have a say to make sure that they're not being used during an academic period. But if you, someone gives me contact, I can connect you directly with our real estate agent, and they can follow up and give you more details.
Okay, that's great. All right. And the next question I have, I know we had conversations maybe a little bit before the school year started about social workers in the schools. I just want to know, like, social workers in the schools, just want to know, like, right now, where are we with those social workers in the schools? Are we at capacity? Are we still looking for clinicians? Can you just give some insight on what's going on there?
No, thank you, Councilman. And I do remember that conversation. Chief Nielsen may or may not have with her, and if we don't have it, we can get you kind of where our vacancy rate is currently for social workers. I will tell you, you know, just generally, we are still under. Like, we do still have openings that are not filled. The rate at which those are not filled would be the exact numbers that I'm more than happy to get you. I will also note that the expanded behavioral health teams that Chief Davis referenced, and we referenced in terms of our budget highlights, are really part of why we're seeing success with those behavioral health teams because of that, because that team approach allows us not to be overly reliant on one position or another before we're able to provide services. And that does not mean that we wouldn't take 100 great social workers tomorrow if they showed up, but it does mean that we are deliberately and intentionally, and frankly out of need, having to build out systems of support that look a little different than just waiting for the FTE to be filled. And so, you know, another place where our community partners have really come in handy, and to be frank, not sure where we would have been without some of them, has been, has been their willingness to kind of step up and step into that space. So I don't think we're all the way there yet. Emily, do you know, or do we want to circle back? So we can circle back with you, Councilman, and get you the hard numbers on that, but I do know we still have vacancies of social workers.
And I do appreciate you guys. And the reason why I asked that question, because my fiancee, she's working for Baltimore City Public Schools, she's a social worker, and she's a clinician, and she knows that her practice outside of the school could be much greater far as incomes. And I know she do because she really sincerely care about the students that, you know, in Baltimore City. So, and I just wanted to, you know, kind of just say, you know, I had to really, really push her, like, to really go there. And I know how important it is that we need those social workers in our schools. So I just want to say, you know, thank you for the support, because you give, you know, a lot of support in those schools. And I just hope and pray that we can get, you know, fully staffed, because our kids really, really do need.
Well, we need to get you on the recruitment team, because clearly you were successful.
All right. Well, I mean, I pushed her hard, so she's there now.
That's great.
The first year, but, but thank you. And thank you also for the work that you're doing in our community. I mean, not just talking about it, but you're visiting the Challenge and Change organizations you're coming to before, we're in the community, which is in my district, and with the Uncle T's, to see the work that we're doing in our neighborhoods. I just want to say thank you and your team for coming out to support what we have going on in District 13. So continue the great work, and I appreciate you guys. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Dr. Santa Lisa, I had a quick question about, well, not a quick question, it's a pretty complex question, but about the adequacy gap. So from your presentation, you mentioned that you'll need upwards of $342 million will be required annually to achieve the adequacy within Baltimore City Public Schools. But upon research of the Kerwin Implementation Plan, the plan is only, the planning and implementation work began in 2022, and it ends in 2324, with the second plan coming in March 2024. Can you, and that, that March 2024 plan will cover subsequent years. Can you speak to, one, some of the strategy that Baltimore City Public Schools is going to undergo in this, like, for the implementation of this plan in subsequent years? The reason why I bring that up is because I'm so grateful for the large influx of state-level dollars within our Baltimore City Public School system. My concern is about the continuity of funds and the continuity of programming that we will obviously face once this implementation plan, once this implementation plan ends. And so can you speak to kind of the sustainability or strategy of sustainability for these funds post 2024? Thank you.
Sure. So I will, thank you, Councilwoman, and I will ask our chief operating officer to, to piggyback a little bit, I'm sorry, chief of staff. I'm sure Dr. Washington is like, I want nothing to do with financial sustainability. Sorry about that. So a couple of things. One, I think we have been, we've tried to be very intentional, and so Kim Hoffman's here, Chief Doherty's here, Chief Jones, and I think there's been a concerted effort to really match up, particularly at the federal level with the federal dollars, how are we making sure that we're spending those funds on things that we can either pick up on the general funds when those grants end, or things that are one-time expenditures that won't mean that. I think the other piece with regards to this is, again, being clear about where we're actually, like, adding bodies, for lack of a better term, right? Because it's a lot harder to need to, for example, lay off folks than not. So a lot of those projections are built around that. And then I think, you know, the chief of staff can talk about, you know, along with along with, you know, Melissa Brennan, DeWanna Staret, I think some of the work we're doing legislatively to make sure that we're communicating out our direction, our intentionality, the fact that even though sometimes it's unpopular, and you know, when we talk about how much people should be paid and everything else, you know, part of what I'm charged to do, and frankly, what the Board of Commissioners is charged to do, is to be able to project out, right, what that funding looks like so that, you know, we're not leaving subsequent generations with with the cliff. That being said, it requires a lot of, I would say, on-the-ground legislative work. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. Yeah, so thanks for the question. We're thinking a lot about sustainability, both because we have the Esser dollars that are going away. And so we want to make sure that we're, to Dr. Santelis's point, thinking carefully about how we braid those funds into what we're doing and and really thinking about the pieces that we're going to keep going with those resources. And we're also thinking about, as the resources come from Kerwin, with the limitations that Dr. Santelis talked about, they're categorical funds. So there are limitations about how you spend them. There's a lot of requirements about how you spend them. And so one of the things we're working with now is Educational Resource Strategies is a is a group that we're working with to really help us make some of those projections about what the costs are associated with Kerwin. Kerwin, in addition to being categorical, there's a lot of new requirements of things that we have to do. So making sure that we're thinking through what are the costs of those additional requirements? There's requirements on teacher salaries. There's requirements on teacher time that is going to require probably more more staff in order to support that, so that we're really thinking through what that looks like and how we most effectively utilize that in order to really meet the needs of our students. And then as part of that, too, another legislative piece that Dr. Santelis was talking about is making sure that we're getting the resources that we're truly due. And one of the challenges that we have is that our poverty is not counted correctly. And we've been having this conversation for years, and it is not fixed yet. And so that's an ongoing conversation about making sure that there is an apples-to-apples way to truly reflect the poverty that is that that our students are experiencing. And Superintendent Choudry has a mechanism using the American Community Surveys Index. He's got a poverty indicators that that he did a really well researched study that looks at the, because it's the American Community Survey Index, that is, every county does, it's part of the census. So every county in the in the country uses this information by a census block. You can look passively, without collecting any information, you can do apples-to-apples comparison about every jurisdiction in the state. And when you do that, what you see is what we know. But in a much deeper and more nuanced way is the depth and the breadth of the poverty in Baltimore City is dramatically different than anywhere else. And the resources that are needed to address that are dramatically different. And so we really need that to be the way that poverty is counted, to truly represent the resources that our young people need in order to 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 meet that sustainability that you're talking about.
And I can appreciate that response. One of the things that I was speaking with a few people in the field, and one of the things that, as a researcher myself, you know, using census tracts has huge limitations. And so the funding formula that you all are using, if you're basing it on census tracts, it's still going to have, oh, sorry. It's it's still going to have considerable amount of limitation for those that are not being counted, those jurisdictions and those precincts such as those in South Baltimore that are undercounted. And so, you know, having that having that strategy in place, I think, is going to be really important. But as we move forward, I hope that there are non-traditional ways that you are kind of including those that are not traditionally included in those census track and that funding formula for poverty so that we can have some sort of estimate of what that additional funding will be will be will be needed in those out years so that we can adequately and appropriately budget within our school systems. I think, you know, when I go around and look at a lot of these schools, they are doing the best that they can on the the budgets that they are provided. What I'm not seeing is the, and hopefully with the change in administration that we have in Annapolis, the influx and understanding of poverty, particularly in the city of Baltimore and other Black and Brown jurisdictions, and how that not only just influences the education formula, but also housing, healthcare, transportation, all of those issues that impact an individual or a child coming into Baltimore City Public Schools. So do you have an idea or a timeline when this plan will be developed or will be completed?
The the poverty?
No, so the.
Oh, our plan for how we're, yes. So just one quick thing on the on the poverty count. So you are right about the undercounting issue, and we we have a dramatic undercounting problem now because of the way we count. So there are challenges with the American Community Survey Index, but because it counts as multi-factors of poverty, it's not just looking at who, the number of people who live there. It's looking at the factors of that census block, so median household income. It looks at things like single-family homes. There's multiple factors that you can look at, including things like vacant homes, that can give you a better, more nuanced picture of poverty. And that's why I think it really did help show a more, a much better picture than we have using farms forms or direct certification, things that really undercount our families.
And and even to that effect, there's still limitations where we have people that are not properly documenting their wages. So, you know, I want us, you know, I want us to push this a little bit farther than just some of the data that's historically been available in these in these these realm of of research. I want us to go a little bit deeper and think a little bit more non-traditional. We have some brilliant folks at Baltimore City Public Schools, and I know that you all are working very hard. I just want us to push a little bit farther, because data, as, you know, most of us understand, can be manipulated and generated. And so we need to really understand what's happening in reality in our communities. And I'm not sure that the that the data that's kind of put out there and always used is adequately representing what's actually happening on the day-to-day level in our communities. So I thank you for that. Did we get a date for that plan yet?
Well, yeah, first, I do want to say, in terms of kind of a contribution point that would be helpful, is because those measures are actually not determined within Baltimore City Public Schools, I actually think the push for the creativity in the counting needs to be at the state level. And so that's a place for advocacy, particularly with the current administration, that I think there might be more opportunity for. In terms of the plan, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. The plan for sustain, like, sustainability?
Yeah, and so I'm sorry. So the plan for, one, having, well, the plan for addressing the adequacy gap wants the Kerwin dollars, if they come back next year after the March 2024 deadline. I want to know what you all are thinking about what's going to happen after the fact, after that March 2024 deadline.
So what's the deadline?
Oh, you mean after this, the mountain of money that the state put aside to make sure that they they funded Kerwin through?
Yeah, so I'm looking at your website right now. It says the plan only addresses planning and implementation work that began in 2021 through 2022 and ends in 2023, 2024. A second plan will be submitted in March of 2024 and will cover the subsequent years.
That's the that's the Esser, I think the Esser, our Esser plans. That expires in in September, that's why we were confused about Kerwin. That expires in September 2024. And so we, that's what we were talking about, is we're spending that as the, with this, the earlier the expiration date, we're spending that. So I think we had 29 COVID relief-related grants. I believe we've closed out 16 of them at 99.7% of them being spent. So we are spending them as they go. And and then part of, to your sustainability question, is looking at which of pieces of those investments we're going to keep with Kerwin, and which of them are shorter-term things, like, you know, obviously, like, COVID, the COVID testing dollars is not something we now need now. We're going to get that reimbursed by FEMA, and that's an expense that will go away.
Okay, because it, and maybe we can talk offline through in the hearing, because it doesn't say anything about the Esser, and so it says the Kerwin Implementation Plan. And this is on the website, Blueprint for Maryland's Future, Baltimore City Public Schools.
So I'm going to, I'm going to ask, we wrap this one up.
Okay.
So I just, can I just clarify that?
You can, Chief Perkins Cohen. I would appreciate if you if you would start with a succinct responsive finality to the Councilwoman's question, please and thank you.
Yes, I will. So they all helped me, that you're talking about the Kerwin Implementation Plan, which is required by the state that we just got finished, and that is only one year of funding.
Microphone, sir. Please, and I'm the only one who's going to tell people to speak into the microphone moving forward. Chair, or whoever's chairing the committee moving forward. Sir, please continue.
The Kerwin Implementation Plan covers, as the Councilwoman states, through FY '24. Meanwhile, the second Kerwin Implementation Plan is due in March of 2024, covering the next three-year period. The funding for Kerwin currently goes through 2032, so there is no reasonable belief that that funding will will stop. But it is confusing in that the first Kerwin Implementation Plan that we submitted.
We, we're going down the confusing part. We got, I think we got the answer. Yeah, I don't want to get too far in the technical details of it. Councilwoman, are you satisfied? Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going into the the blueprint, the, and Kerwin, the blueprint coordinator is supposed to be appointed, and I'm wondering who that is. And my understanding is that the coordinator has to be appointed by both Dr. Santelis and also the mayor. We, to my knowledge, have not met that person. So I'm wondering who that is and if we can have, you know, more of a relationship. Because generally, when there's appointments, we do have the, you know, advice and consent. And I know that's not what the state wanted, but we should have a relationship with that person.
So the blueprint coordinator is Sandy Jacobs, who works in the finance team. She's phenomenal, and she was jointly appointed by the mayor and by the CEO. So we can certainly, she's, I feel like we've had her here before, but we can certainly bring her to another hearing, so you can meet her. But she's the one who who spearheaded the Kerwin Implementation Plan that Councilwoman Porter was asking about, which, by the way, did get the highest score in the state. So I didn't want to brag, but I will tell you that.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be important to to have a relationship with her, because there's certain things, like the social workers and the, you know, IEPs and others, that, we love seeing you all, we absolutely love seeing you all. But I think, you know, that specific role is for the Kerwin Implementation. And given our increased investment, it makes, I think, a lot of sense to to do that. And I just want to take a second to back up what Councilwoman Schleifer was saying about the IEP 504 and everything else process. It is difficult. It is very, very confusing, and families are walking into those meetings not understanding what their rights are. It's, so I would hope that, you know, moving forward, either as part of Kerwin or there was pending legislation to try to kind of change the process, that we can figure that out for families, okay? Because I get the complaints as well, I've been through it as well. And so it's just something that, like, you know, families are sometimes finding out just immediately what the diagnosis is, and then they go into these meetings, and they don't really know what's going on. And schools that are under-resourced are going to try to not provide the resources because they don't have them. So, I mean, I think we just need to have a better way of helping aid parents to understand, you know, what their what their rights are as well. And so, you know, I think that that's just something that we need to, we need to certainly figure out. And I look forward to talking more about that with you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So wanted to talk a little bit about CTE and where we are with the overhaul of the district-wide CTE portfolio. I know that that was a last discussion we had, it was, seemed like it was a multi-year transition. So just looking for an update on where that stands and any particular updates associated with Edmonton Westside High School and the transition out of the Westside Skill Center and into the main campus. So where where those things stand? If you don't have all that particulars for Edmonton, happy to make it a request to follow up on.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Burnett. Chief Dobrowski, would you like to?
Thank you. So as you know, we've been working through sort of our strategic implementation work that's going through. And there's certainly been movement throughout to increase more opportunities. And there's been some changes in some of our local programs in different high schools and such. So what I do know that with the current space where we're looking at some CTE programs, both at at Mervau, at Forest Park, and Carver for some new pieces there, again, programs aligned with ensuring that above-living wage opportunities for our students. So those investments continue. I'm not particular on the Edmonton piece, so I may need some colleagues that we help, or we can certainly find out about that.
Yeah, we can, we can circle back with you, Councilwoman Burnett, specifically on the Edmonton profile.
But the investments we continue to make in terms of making sure we have the most current equipment, materials, programming, technology, those investments continue. We certainly know that the, it's more than just having those things. It's also ensuring that our students then come out ready to take those exams and sit for those exams and then get that certification. So I'm working with the CTE, we're trying to really track that data, making sure that students also are on track. And when students move across different schools, just make sure that they don't lose that sort of trajectory that they're on. So we're trying to stabilize those pieces. But I will say that our continued work to grow and expand continues, and you'll see those investments there in our budget.
And do you have the current certification data upon graduation?
I don't have it with me, but I can certainly get it, because we do report annually to MSD. So I can certainly get that for you.
Okay. So can I put that as a request, Mr. Chair, two parts? Just the current postgraduate CTE certification rate citywide? And then an update on Edmonton Westside's transition?
Hang on, hang on. Nate, do you got the first one?
It sounds like.
Hang on, hang on. Nate, read back to me the first one, please.
Certification, so once they graduate, we want to know where, like, are they successful in whatever trade they've gone into at passing certifications? And it sounds like Councilwoman Ramos would like that by school.
Can you? Can you, can you please repeat the, so go back to the the first one, Councilman. I just want to make sure we capture these correctly. So I apologize for interrupting, please forgive my diligence here.
So I'll revise it, because Councilwoman Ramos is asking for a larger breakdown. So if we could get a breakdown by school, there's a certain number of schools that have CTE programs. So each school with the certification rate is year-to-date for CTE schools.
Okay, pause for one second. Nate, you have all that captured? Thank you. Councilman, please put the second one.
The second one was an update, so there's supposed to be a transition from the Westside Skill Center, the CTE programs in the Westside Skill Center into the main campus. Just trying to get an update on where we stand with that transition.
Nate, you good? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Conley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to follow up on a question, or rather, statement brought up earlier by Vice President Middleton with regard to apprenticeship programs. We in the city have a huge need for folks to do work in the city, and we're having trouble filling those positions. And we also know that our young people are looking for jobs, need jobs. Not everyone's going to college, and there are awesome career opportunities here with the city. I'm curious what apprenticeship programs we currently support, what funding we currently have for apprenticeship programs, and if you have any sense of what our ability to expand those programs might look like when we think about something like this going forward.
So before I turn it over to Chief Dobrowski, I think one of the areas I'd highlight is our investment, really in the middle of COVID, frankly, in virtual learning, in expanding our work-based learning opportunities across the city. So for the first time, at least in the 14 or 15 years I've lived in the city and worked with city schools, we actually had geographical work-based learning coordinators, right, who actually were on the ground, able to be on the ground, and and moving some of that work. That being said, we know that from a state perspective, we still have a long way to go. And it's an area, and that's probably why Dr. Dobrowski's shaking her head, is just very forthrightly, apprenticeships are a place that we do, we do need to build out. Where we are, have been successful, are in the kinds of partnerships that I think Vice Chair Middleton referenced with particular divisions, even with our own, you know, Chair Middleton referenced with particular divisions, even with our own, you know, operations team, right, in being able to identify particular positions that we know there are going to be gaps in, or frankly, there are opportunities in. But it's a, it's definitely a story of, yes, there's been progress, yes, there's been investment, there's been investment in upgrading more CTE spaces, which was a place where we really lagged. I think, though, you know, to, you know, your question and a number of other people's questions, when we look at the state data, we realize we still have a long way to go. And I actually just received an update from Kumasi Vines, who heads up our, you know, our career, who we frankly lured away, stole, whatever word you want to use, years ago from the city, and Kumasi's fabulous, and Dr. Dobrowski and the team, and we saw where we are relative to the state. And I think the team has set goals, but knows that those goals, we definitely have a ways to go. Chief Dobrowski, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add, the spaces, we're working closely with the state, investing or putting forward for a grant, along with sort of our, some of our community partners, expanding those opportunities and reaching out to our community to please put faith in our young people, to let them come on as an apprentice. So there's that two-way space that we're in. I think the other piece that we've talked a lot about is the Kerwin, the blueprint, rather, is calling for this. And so we have to ensure that in our high school schedules, there's space and time for our young people to have that apprenticeship space, which gets into, we had to go back and look at the high school schedule and actually redesign so that when we get to eleventh and twelfth grade, there's a way for that young person to hop into an apprenticeship without losing any sort of their progress to be on track. So there's some systems work that we have to get in place, but to echo Dr. Santalisis, this is top of mind for us right now, because we know we lag here, and we have to do improvement work there.
I appreciate that, and I can tell you, as questions from my colleagues, Burnett, Vice President, we're all really interested in this. I've had a number of conversations with the agencies. They're interested in it as well. Anything we can do to support, I'm eager to find that out. Are you guys developing a plan or anything like that that would have us?
Yes, we are. So I can certainly go back to the team and get the details. There's a, there's a number of different opportunities that they're looking at, and we, again, we had a briefing a couple of weeks ago with Dr. Santalisis on it. They were going back to do revisions, so I can check back with the team to see where they're at with that.
Okay. And do you have any sense of when you might expect to have that draft or the plan complete?
There is interest in getting pieces started in this next upcoming school year. I don't know how broad those are, so let me, again, check with the team, but I'll definitely take it as a time-sensitive piece to come back and give an update.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Santalisis and your team. One of the areas that we know can really improve academics and even close achievement gaps is high-quality early childhood education, particularly really good preschool. I will say, I've seen with my own daughter, who is at a Baltimore City Public School in preschool, that it has been life-changing. Her relationship with her teachers and her classmates and just the love of learning and the reading that she's done has just been really incredible, and she has grown enormously in this one year. I know that part of the blueprint is pushing toward, I believe the framing is near-universal pre-kindergarten for the state of Maryland. I'm curious where Baltimore City is on that trajectory. I believe Tier One is supposed to be rolled out this year, and I know that for our low-income kids, there's, of course, Head Start, and there are more spaces available. But where are we on the trajectory to universal pre-kindergarten, and is there a timeline at which we would get there?
Chief Dobrowski, do you want to take this?
I think our story for early childhood pre-K is a strong one in Baltimore City. So we have been actually further along than many jurisdictions in the number of seats we offer and the quality of what we offer. And that's resulted, shown in sort of our early kindergarten readiness assessment data that shows when students are in our pre-K programs, like your daughter, it certainly does have an impact of how much more ready they are. There is certainly larger work that we are doing as part of the blueprint, as part of Pillar One, to ensure more access and reaching out and doing more outreach to more families to get more. We do often have seats, but in some locations, our seats fill very quickly. So one of the things we think about is how we can have more seats in more locations to address sort of, again, access, and again, to that high quality. Part of the investment we're also making is around the curriculum. We have some amazing early childhood teachers, and we're going to be investing and really relying on their expertise to help lift up what kinds of instructional materials we need in all of our, in all of our preschool settings or pre-K settings. So I think we are in a good shape with that. We can certainly give you some of those details that we put forward in our Kerwin Plan that lay out the very methodical way that we're looking at the expansion, because there's multiple spaces around the universal, because there's the four-year-olds, there's the three-year-olds. It quickly gets deep into the details. But we, again, as Chief Percoyne said, our Kerwin Plan for that work has been well-received by the state, and I think, again, reflects the great work that's gone on in our early learning, and I'm happy to get that to you.
Sure. So I guess I'll ask that slightly differently. Let's hold on pre-K three for a minute. When do we think we can get to universal pre-K four for Baltimore City Public Schools?
Yeah, no, no, no. So I think, I think part of where we are, and, you know, I'm only looking at Chief High Cupboard, because a lot of our efforts have gone to making sure, to Chief Dobrowski's point, that we can actually fill the seats in all areas of the city. I will just also very straightforwardly say, you know, some of it is also in that same slide that I showed about special education, and that is the investment of the dollars for universal pre-K up and, or to move towards universal pre-K have primarily come in excess of what we get for the state. So Baltimore City, even before I arrived fourteen years ago as Chief Academic Officer, had put a kind of stake in the ground around early learning. So to say by a particular date, we'll be at universal pre-K, I don't have that right now, to be very honest, Councilman. And some of that is because we're already, again, devoting general fund dollars above and beyond what we're given. So some of how we look at the expansion question towards universal pre-K is really an overall budget kind of question. So there are pieces within pre-K that Kerwin says we must invest in, and that gets into the tiering and the tier ones and the quality of it. But a lot of the determination is going to come from the state's, frankly, commitment to universal pre-K, because right now, we're already devoting above and beyond what the state actually gives us money for. So I don't want to give you a date, because a lot of it's going to be tied to what the state funding looks like for universal pre-K.
Great. So I would appreciate, Chief Dobrowski, a data report, an analysis of how many kids are currently enrolled, pre-K three and four, and just trajectory and trends, knowing that obviously this is an emphasis within Kerwin and especially for a city like Baltimore, you know, it's really, really, really necessary. I think that cities like DC, obviously very different situation, have a lot more money than we do, but having universal pre-K makes a huge difference. And, you know, the last anecdote I'll leave with is my daughter spent two years before she went to Hampstead Hill Academy at a private preschool in Baltimore, a school for little kids, and it was okay, but she completely blossomed when she got into a Baltimore City Public School. And I think, you know, it's not a story that is told a whole lot, but I will just say her experience has been phenomenal, and just the quality of care that her teacher has provided has just been vastly different and vastly better in the public school that she's in. And so, you know, I definitely want to see that for all of our kids. So that would be my data request. Hey, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Nate, you got that? Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could you go over, I know that we talked about the $2 million increase in spending for athletics, saw that specifically middle school was called out, then also saw something like $50 per pupil. Does the $50 roll up into the $2 million to create the $2 million, or is the $50 a supplement to the $2 million that Central's providing?
Yeah, it's a supplement.
Now, as it relates to the $2 million plus the 50 times the entire school district, as far as middle school, high school?
Say that one more time.
So it's $2 million plus 50 per pupil in all middle school, all high schools. Is that right?
Yeah, we ask schools to put $50 per pupil so that they have money set aside for athletics, for the things that they need. The $2 million is because we're starting up competitive middle school sports that's going to be at a different level, and so there's going to be just basic things that are needed to start games, referees, everything.
Obviously, this has been something that I've been pushing, so I'm really excited. Could you tell, talk about the programming? How does that work and feel?
Sure. The way we are thinking about this is there are some district-wide sports that we will organize ourselves, specifically basketball, cross-country, flag football, volleyball, track and field, and indoor and outdoor bocce. We are gonna, we have got a request for proposals that will eventually go out to also get capacity assistance with a vendor, so that we've got some coordinated sports, because we also know that some sports, like badminton, baseball, and I can give you the long list of this, some vendors do very well.
What's the sports again? I'm sorry?
Sure. The coordinated sports are basketball, cross-country, flag football, volleyball, track and field, and bocce. We will coordinate that.
Flag football, track and field, bocce.
And bocce, yes.
And what's the one before, track and field?
Volleyball.
Volleyball. Got it.
We will coordinate that centrally. But we know we're going to need additional capacity support, and there are some vendors out there that also work really well in this space. So that won't start until the third quarter. The sports I just told you, we will start at the beginning of the year.
So how does that look as far as just focusing on the coordinated sports? Does every middle school get a team? How does that work?
Yeah, we are gonna, we have been speaking with our principals about if they believe that they can support a team and if we can help them find coaches, right? It'll be an organized situation where, frankly, just like our high schools, right, you have to have the interest, and you have to have the coaches, and you have to have some momentum on the school level. So I'm sure that over the years, it will grow over time. This is our first year into these competitive sports, so it's going to be really a school-by-school basis, and we're going to work with them, both in the schools office and the athletics office, to really drum up as much support as we can for young people that, if they want a volleyball team, then it's going to, we're going to make it available for them.
How does parity look between gender?
Say it again.
Parity, gender parity.
Yeah, so we are, you know, it is around Title IX that we do have to, have to look at that, and I think from a sports standpoint, right, sometimes things are both girls and boys, like track and field. Volleyball is girls, right? Cross-country is both. So we try to get as much parity as possible, and we try to make sure we've got just as many girls' sports as we do for boys, and try to be just as enthusiastic with everyone.
Why do we say baseball and not softball?
I believe it, so in our, in our coordinated sports with our vendor, we will have baseball and softball.
Okay, so it is baseball and softball. I think you just said baseball. Got it. Now.
I can give you the full list. It is a longer list with our vendor, and I just didn't want to read off all, like, twelve sports. So I can get you that list.
But the coordinated sports is not with the vendor. Is that accurate?
That is with, my fault. So there's district-coordinated sports. We think we have the capacity to pull that off.
Without a vendor.
That's exactly right. And then we've got some vendor-coordinated sports. We are working hard so that our sports are during the weekdays, and the vendor-coordinated sports are in the weekends, because transportation is a big deal. I will tell you, it is the, it is the barrier in all of this, and so we don't really want to have too much overlap.
Understood. So transportation will be school-sponsored transportation?
Yes, for ours, yes.
Yes. I'm not only talking about the district-coordinated. And as far as referees and everything, it's all out of that $2 million plus $50,000 per?
Yes.
And then I guess, just like in high school, the district will set the schedule, set playoffs, the whole?
Yes, that's exactly right. I mean, and I just want to be clear, and this, this year, we have had a little bit of a ramp up to this, where we have had culminating championships and activities at the end of the season, but we just haven't had the competitive sports leading up to that. So there are, there are sports for our young people in middle school, but we want to, we want to bring that to another level.
Now, the conversation we just had is just germane to middle school. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Right, so that $2 million plus the 50 times each pupil in middle school, that all goes to middle school sports?
Yeah, the $50 per pupil, I believe, is for high school as well.
Yeah, but no, no, but just, just with me for a second. So the coordinated district sports, right? We've got $2 million set aside for middle school sports, plus $50 per pupil in middle school will be the entire budget associated with this coordinated sports effort for middle school?
Yes. I would give a little bit of a caveat, that I'm sure some schools, when they do the $50 per pupil, might go down to fourth and fifth grade as well, if they can find a vendor. That's, that's very school-by-school based. I just didn't want to make a blanket statement.
This is really exciting. You know, obviously, I've been a huge proponent of middle school sports for obvious reasons. But the bigger thing is particularly as it relates to young women. In Baltimore City, you know, really their first exposure to athletics is in high school, providing a huge competitive disadvantage, not only as it relates to inner, in city, inside the city, but more importantly, outside of the, our jurisdictions of the city. So definitely exciting news.
Yeah. Dr. Santalisis, I feel like that is what she's been saying the entire time, that this needs to be a pipeline, and their first, a girls', or, you know, boys', first exposure can't be in high school.
I'm sure Dr. Santalisis, as well as Madam Chief of Staff, have heard me talk about it probably more times than they would want me to talk about. But just real quick, summing up school sports, when we talk about high school sports, what's the total budget allocated to high school sports today? Is it like 1%?
I have to be honest with you, I don't think I have that as handy as I should. Yeah, it was 1% on the chart.
Okay. We don't have to go over that today. We do have the upcoming hearings that, you know, we really want to dig down into that, so as much data you guys can pull away, so we can really drill down. Hopefully, from a programing perspective, maybe it's, we can go in a little more detail when we go into the hearing.
Such as sports by school.
But thank you so much for coming into this budget hearing today with this information. Made me really, really excited, truly appreciate your responsiveness and addressedness. Thank you so much, Madam CEO.
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter?
No more, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I didn't see in this document, or in your slides, or in the budget, anything about conflict resolution. As we know, a lot of our, you know, students just don't know how to handle conflict, and it's actually spreading out and contributing to violence. And so we talked a little bit in a previous hearing about the possibility of figuring out, you know, what's the best way to infuse not just restorative practices, that's super important, I'm really excited about what's happening with restorative practices, but literally having some way to be intentional about how young people can address conflict and be trained in that regard. So, I mean, I, I used to be the board chair of the Community Mediation Center, I'm a trained mediator. There's, it's, it's much different than a teacher saying, be kind and listen. It's, it's very intentional training, and I see nothing about it here, and yet I really think that if we're intentional about it in our schools, that we will hopefully make sure that our young people are not solving conflict with a gun. And so what, where, where is this? What are we going to be doing with this? Can we allot some of this funding to it? How do we make this happen? Because I do think that, I know that Monsi is going into some of our schools for the youth violence reduction strategy. One of my schools is getting that, which I'm really excited about, and it's going to have a little bit of that in that process. But by the time they get to high school, it's a little too late, right? So I'm trying, I mean, we'll, we'll do the best we can, and I think that, given some of the work that Dr. Lawrence is already doing at Murvo, I think it's starting to work, frankly. But I want to just kind of see, how can we have an intentional conflict mediation in the curriculum, in the schools, at least to just have some fighting chance of having a different way? At least to just have some fighting chance of having a different way of solving conflict besides a gun?
Yeah, I think, so I'll start, and then Chief Davis may want to add something about our peer mediation work. So I think, I think it's a couple of things, right? One, part of why we've set up, for example, a real focus on morning meeting and advisory is to have a place for that work to take place, right? So some of the response to your question would be in our developing of the curriculum for those spaces of time in the schedule and in that work. How are we integrating conflict resolution into that? In some schools, and I would say that's, that's being revised as we go, right? So Katia Stokes has done a lot of work on that. We've also done, gotten a lot of feedback from teachers and school leaders about what's working in some of the curriculum we're using for that period and whatnot. And I think we too are hearing, right, the need for the conflict resolution. I think in other places, quite frankly, it's our community partners who are working with schools that might not necessarily be full classroom teachers who are using it, but who are actually the ones who are helping to develop young people in the skills in the moment. And I know, for example, last night, Chief High Cavern and I had a meeting with some of our close community partners in this. And a lot of what they are doing in schools is exactly that. It's developing within young people, but in the moment. And some of what I've heard when I'm in with the folks on the ground actually doing the work is that while, yes, it's a curriculum, like if you talk to folks like Uncle T or the movement team or those, they will tell you, it's actually in the moment, right? It's actually practicing in the moment, because young people might sit in a morning meeting with a lovely curriculum, and that's great. But the translation of that, when I walk out of the school door and am confronted with something on the way home, requires an in-the-moment kind of coaching and prompting. So we've really taken both approaches, both the like practical in the moment, as well as what you referenced earlier, and that is the, the curriculum. So that space and time, I think, was also very intentional. Because if not, what happens is we get lots of programs, right? We get lots of programs building up, and then it's, well, who has restorative practices? And who has mediation? And who has social, emotional, you know, yoga? I mean, and I'm not being petty about it. I'm just saying, literally, there are plethora of programs that, that folks feel like need to be there to help students. And what we've found to be most successful is when we do the review of what's the actual in-classroom curriculum alongside our community partners, who often frankly are the best mediators with our young people, because they meet the profile of who they are. And I met with some of our close partners a couple of weeks ago, who said, look, I am these kids, right? I come from Baltimore. I, you know, had interaction with the justice system. I know what it's like, right, to be walking home and get jumped. Like, like they know that, and so their responses are frankly, real-time and in-moment. And what we have found is that a combination of that works. But we've also, I think, done some work in peer mediation that gives another space in that. John, did you want to say something about the peer mediation?
Yeah, I just wanted to be honest that we haven't had as strong a coordinated effort in peer mediation, and we have fifty thousand dollars put aside in the budget for that to begin to, to be more intentional with a group of schools and a group of students that want to be trained in that and begin to have a cohort that we can spread. My memory is correct, I think we're using some of the additional extra dollars that we still have. So we're going to have to figure out sustainability and see if it, how it flourishes this year. But I just wanted to be straight about that.
No, and I appreciate that. I think just doubling down on that effort is going to be super important. I mean, it's also, you know, some of the professional development in the teachers as well. Because like you said, in the moment, certainly, you know, that is one of the ways that there can be, you know, wait a second, let's handle this a little bit differently, and this is how we can do it. So I totally get that. There's also this, this sort of conflict mediation relative to parents as well, frankly. I just leave it at that. So I think that, you know, whatever way we can support the school system in getting those resources in, I'm, I'm really committed to that in any way possible. I will also give a plug, my, I have a constituent, I don't know if you've met Bruno yet, but I have a constituent who brings in her little dog in, at Murvo, two days a week, little Bruno. And, you know, basically, the, the dog just brings, I mean, he loves belly rubs, so he receives belly rubs. But he just exudes just pure joy, really. And I think that that also has really made a difference. Honestly, it's made a difference. Because first of all, she's consistent, so that's one piece of it. But also that there's, I think it just brings a different kind of support that, you know, you never know, you never knew. I don't think Murvo ever thought that that was, was going to work. It's, it's a little bit, it's a little action, and so those kinds of things will help. And I think that actually, because she's there, the interaction with the dog is, is actually having a big effect. And so it's sort of related to conflict resolution, but really about, like, just to any, anybody thinking about, hey, I want to volunteer in the school, what can I do? Do whatever you want, or you can, and that the principal can handle, because I think it makes a big difference. So, you know, just those, those interactions are important. But anyway, on the conflict mediation piece, I, I think it's really important. If we can build that up and, you know, support parents and support students in that way. I mean, there may even be like trainings for parents, like how can I handle, you know, certain things with my kid or whatever? And we can certainly be a part of, you know, getting the word out about those kinds of things. I mean, I think that that's, you know, something we can certainly partner, partner on.
Yeah, but I do want to share, you know, at times, we unfortunately have to ban a parent if they've acted in a certain way.
Understood, totally.
And we had a, a situation that I think goes to what you're saying. We had to use, and we, we usually have not done this, because usually our, any type of mediation or things is usually for the youth and for our students. But we did bring in a partner to help ensure that a parent re-enters the right way, because literally, there were staff members that weren't comfortable, even though their ban time was up. It's tedious and very, it's tough work, right? And, but, you know, I think your, your point and that experience is something that we have to think about.
Yeah, well, it folds into the trauma-informed work, too. I mean, there are people that just have a lot going on, and they're just triggered in certain ways. So it's all, it's all connected. So, anyway, any way we can help, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the things that's come up pretty regularly over the last few months, after I put in an ordinance to raise and put pressure on businesses serving students during school hours, during the curfew hours, has been the, the issue of just the quality of lunches overall. And I had an opportunity to sit down with a group of young people to talk through, like, why they're leaving in the building in the first place to go to, go to get food. And I heard a multitude of responses, some ranging from, you know, we just want something different than what's being served, to obviously just concerned about the, the quality of lunches overall, not being able to have food delivered. But there were two that really stood out. One, again, obviously, either the quality of the food, but two, the, there are some schools that have culinary programs, and they're so severely underfunded, because that was one of the ideas, is allow the kids to make special meals a couple of times. And either they don't have commercial kitchens to make, to make the food, or they don't have the budgets to even provide at any type of scale, which, you know, to some degree, I think is sort of a missed opportunity to allow these young people to gain experience in catering meals or catering for large groups of, of people upon graduation. Can you speak to how we're using funding, both to address the quality of the lunches that our young people are being fed every day? And two, how are we trying to build capacity for the schools that do have culinary programs, where we're not really providing them the opportunity to work at scale?
Chief Tardy?
Thank you, Councilman. With our food service, actually, the, there was a slide that had a small sliver of the pie, and that was the Enterprise Fund, which is what funds our food services. That represents a several-million-dollar increase from FY23, specifically aimed at more and better suppliers of food and increasing of staffing. So there is a nice, I'll get the exact increase, but it's, it's, I think it's eleven million dollars that it went up from twenty-three to twenty-four. Part of that reflects increased food costs and budgeting for that. But we're also very actively looking at broadening our suppliers and increasing the quality of our food. We have heard those, we have heard those complaints about a dip in the food quality during COVID for a variety of reasons, mostly supply chain and not as many staff as we would like. So we are adding budget to that and specifically looking. We actually have, it isn't official yet, but we have a partnership that we're doing with a new and better provider of chicken, which is one of, the second most popular meal, second only to pizza. And Food Service keeps very close track of what the students react to positively and negatively. And very much, they, they really do want specific feedback on satisfaction with meals as much as possible. But, but the Food Nutrition Service is increasing its budget aimed directly at food quality. I frankly can't speak to the culinary programs that you mentioned, though.
Is there anyone that can speak to, just, you know, I think about, I know you have.
Murvo has it.
Murvo, Edmondson.
Carver has it, yeah.
Yeah, have culinary programs.
What I will say is, when I visit schools that have those culinary, there are lots of creative ways that we use our culinary students to serve adults or parts of their community. I think it gets tricky when they start to work on the serving of students, because my guess, I'm going to knock, I'm going to get out of my lane a little bit here, there are a lot of requirements in terms of the, the programs for student meals. That being said, though, I do think the experiences that we do for our culinary students to help with a lot of district types of things, we do maximize and give them lots of opportunities for some of that real-world, come and cater a large event. We do our June Leadership Institute for our principals. We're going to have our students there, helping to serve some things there. So we do do it, but I think when we try to serve into using them as a proxy for student, we enter into a different space. But I'll defer to others who can.
Yeah, no, I mean, what I would say is, it's one of the spaces where it's most challenging to be creative. Because, you know, I actually agree with young people. I mean, I, I feel like if we've got a culinary program, that should help provide some variety. Like, I don't disagree with the idea. I think part of the challenge we have is with the restrictions that come with funding. And the funding for food, right, from the federal government has a lot of restrictions that come alongside it whenever we're trying to do things that are creative. And I feel as if, and, you know, I'm just being forthright, Councilman. I feel like we have been talking about creative approaches to food services and, you know, giving young people different variety from the time I've landed in Baltimore City. And we, you know, again, the generation of really creative ideas, the generation of how about we try this or that, seems to like hit a snag when we're trying to, you know, do something out of the box. I mean, it's one of the, to be blunt, challenging things about having to ask other people for money, right? Because you got to ask the federal government for money, which means you got to spend it the way they want you to spend it, not the way you think you could do it more efficiently. That being said, I think that our food and nutrition team has really sought to hear and to understand. I think, like Chief Tardy said, a big hit was taken. I noticed a marked increase in student complaints about food post-COVID. Like, you know, I'm not saying everybody was rushing to the cafeteria to get a meal before. But even anecdotally, like, I feel as if my first four years as CEO, I didn't really hear tons about food. And I feel like the last two years, the number one thing that comes up is, is either food or mental health. And so part of what I think we have got to continue to do is be in that listening partnering posture, you know, with young people. Now, I will just say forthright, you know, maybe I'm too old school. No, you're not going to get UPA Eats to deliver to your bio class. That's just not going to happen, at least while I'm here. Because, you know, that's disruptive to the school environment. And I have a lot of parents and community people who would agree with me on that. That being said, what I commit to do is to continue to make sure that we have a listening and a creative, you know, a creative approach and not being so like, you know, because a lot of times during COVID, I felt like I was saying every other week, and I remember Councilwoman Ramos might remember this. You know, it's supply chain, right? And we can't get this, and we can't get that. And I think part of what we're trying to do is kind of regain some ground that we, that we had previously and continue to push on, like, the creative approaches. Because, you know, your, your first swipe at something, the, it might seem like it's no, but the second swipe, not. So I think what you're hearing in me is, I get the same, I get the same thing when I meet with student groups. It's less than it was, but it is markedly more. I, I don't ever remember either a CAO or my first four years as CEO getting this much student blowback on food. So we've got to continue to work on it.
Yeah, and I, and I would say if there's creative ways to seek other funding for particularly the culinary programs outside of the federal government, I think that would be something of interest. And for me, the context of food obviously is about the nutritional value. But as it pertains to the context of me seeking to introduce legislation to address the, the businesses around the school, it was because about student safety. And, you know, because kids leaving the building to find something better to eat is sort of a bigger challenge beyond like the nutritional conversation. It's about like, well, where are they? Are they in danger? Are their, their parents are expecting them to be in the building? And they're at Kimmy's or Royals or anywhere else, you know, leaving to try and find something better? And I've also heard from staff at schools, I mean, like, as young as like elementary school, of kids being late for school because they don't want the school breakfast. So they're, they're stopping in the store along the way, and then they're coming in late. And, you know, or going in the liquor stores to get like, you know, snacks and stuff like that on the way in. And, and these are children as long as like third, fourth grade, not just high school students. And so for me, it's about, the, the context obviously is about like what's on the plate, but then it's also this sort of bigger picture of like, where are our young people when they should be in the building?
Yes, if I could, Councilman Burnett, some additional facts that I think directly answer or speak to your questions. Number one, we, we're proud of a, a new food truck that we have. And if you've seen it, it, it is clearly designed by young people. There was a, it was a, an effort led by our students on what would be an attractive food truck, like, but right down to the lettering and the colors and what kind of food will be served there. And so that food truck kind of makes the rounds, and it, you can find out where it's going to be on our website. But that, that food truck is a manifestation of our relationship with, with the kids. Secondly, Great Kids Farm, which for those who don't know it, is right there on the kind of Catonsville line off Baltimore National Pike, is a remarkable place. And the culinary programs in our district use food produced at Great Kids Farm. And so there's a real nice circular aspect of growing, growing the food and then using the food in the culinary programs. Ten kids in, ten students, young people in the culinary programs are actually working for FNS over the summer, because we, we still serve many thousands of meals a day. And so ten, it's not a hundred, it's not five hundred, but it's ten, ten kids are going to be working all summer for FNS. And finally, with the meals and the quality of the meals that, that you have pointed out, kids tend to vote with their stomachs. They, they, they just won't take a meal, because they don't want to take it and dump it. They might, they, they might not eat everything they take, but generally, they vote with their stomachs by not taking it. This year, we're serving nine thousand more lunches per day than we were last year. And, and that's, we view that as they're making the decision to eat more lunches, because it's not that many more children in schools, it's that many more lunches that are being taken and eaten. And we're, we're committed to getting better and better on the quality with the food.
Thank you.
Can I have a follow-up on this real quick?
If it is very direct and succinct.
Yes. Obviously, Dr. Santa Lisa's.
Can you, can you jump right to the question, please?
Sure. I think that the, the main thing is to look at.
Can you jump to the question, please?
Sure. I think that what we wanna also look at is the fact that in other school, other places around the country, because, you know, I had a group of students that we were working with, looked at what are, everybody in the federal government, everybody has to deal with the same federal guidelines, but the way that the food was prepared was what was different, right? So it was actual kitchens in the schools. So making sure that as we're rehabbing these schools, that we actually have kitchens and staff that are willing to cook the food rather than warm up the food. And then the other piece was, we took a group of students to a field trip with the vegetables, the, what's it called, coastal, and that, that was great, yeah. But they only deliver the food to, the vegetables to each school once a week. So what happens at the end of the week? It doesn't look very good. So I think that there's some likes, well, the, the kitchen thing is actually a big capital expense, but the, but the delivery of the, some of the vegetables twice a week rather than once a week might be at least a, a difference there as well. And I'd love to figure out the best way to utilize our culinary students to get the, the practice. So just because I've been working on this issue too, I just wanted to chime in. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Conley, or, wait, we did Burnett? Councilman Conley? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We talked a little bit about truancy earlier with President Mosby. It brings to mind the idea of the Squeegee collaborative. I'm, I'm curious what the Baltimore City School System's role is in the Squeegee efforts for the city and how we're thinking about that going forward.
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and I, I think there's, it actually, if you'd permit me just a little bit, it, it actually goes beyond just the Squeegee initiative. We are partnering with the city on some key initiatives that are youth-related generally, but that we recognize are not just purely the school system. So in addition to the support we provided for the Squeegee effort, we also have Safe, we have Safe Passage. We are working with, I mean, working very closely with MONC, Chief Perkins Cohen has been working very, very closely with MONC when we have incidents at schools and deploying that. We know that school police has been working to coordinate with Baltimore City Police around some of the, the efforts across the city. And the Mayor's Office of Family and Children, under the leadership of Deb Brooks, formerly with City Schools, is, you know, we're partnering again on the attendance effort, we've partnered on summer. And so I think one of the things that is important to know, even with the, just the Squeegee effort, is that the approach in Baltimore City to going with cross-agency work to support children and families, I can tell you from a national perspective, is not going on everywhere. And it's, I think, one of the distinctives of Baltimore City that is not happening in every urban area, and I know because I talk to my colleagues. So whether it's Squeegee initiatives, or whether it's the response to upticks in violence, or whether it's the response to where are young people gonna go during the summer, Baltimore City, we, we are partnering far more closely, I think, with the city on these efforts than we were earlier in my career here. And, and if you want an update specifically on Squeegee initiative, we can follow up with the specific information on that, Councilman.
That would help, and I, I, you touched on a couple other things, which are parts of my future questions, which I appreciate. And, no, it's perfect, I didn't have to ask them, you save us all time. I would love if you could provide updates on those pieces, and specifically your role in it, and how we're thinking about the budget implications for that, how we've made sure that we have appropriate support staff and otherwise to make sure that we can do those, those pieces effectively, that's all.
Absolutely. And I will just add the curfew initiative.
Yes, curfew, of course.
Yes.
Which, for those watching this weekend.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Wrong button. Thank you, Councilman, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Didn't realize it was coming back to me. My next question is around longitudinal data analysis. So I know, again, it's, I kind of circled it when we're talking about absenteeism, but just for a broader perspective, how much is the district like really leveraging the database at this point? Is it effective? I know there was a huge fight in Annapolis when we were finally able to get access to the data and compile it in a way that made sense, but just wanted to know like how much Baltimore City is kind of utilizing it.
No, thank you, and I'm going to give it to Chief Teresa Jones, but before I do, I do want to say thank you for the advocacy on that, because that was a long time coming, so much appreciated. But Chief Jones, would you like to?
A long and a ridiculous fight.
Yes.
Yes, so thank you very much for that question. So, just a couple things. So you're referencing the Baltimore City Youth Data Hub, which we consider to be a phenomenal collaborative effort to set the stage for the use of data sharing in ways that we haven't been able to do in Baltimore. So where we stand right now is we're still in the early stages of standing it up. So first and foremost, we have identified some key projects that will be the first use cases. We have made some headway around gaining additional funding in order to put the people resources in place through Baltimore's Promise, so that we'll actually be able to have the technical infrastructure to be able to integrate the data from the multiple agencies. And we've been working across the agencies to ensure a commitment to submitting the data that we're looking to use for those initial use cases. So I would say at this stage, what you should anticipate is seeing reports probably within the next year, simply because one of the first use cases is around summer, and we're in the process now of being able to ensure that we're gonna have that data available to do that first passive analysis. In addition to that, we're anticipating that one of the big learnings is really gonna be around the technical challenges and data quality issues. So I just want to name that, because part of the learning opportunity of having this infrastructure is to be able to have better data collection across agencies that allow for more solid integration when those data are submitted.
Thank you. And, I'm sorry, your title and name?
Certainly, it's Teresa Jones, and I'm the Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer for the District. I also serve as a core team member in the establishment of the Baltimore City Youth Data Hub, and I stand as a key member in support of the planning around that effort.
Thank you. Looking to, I guess, engage with you shortly, we've been working with Department of Juvenile Services, so want to mash some data, and kind of want to show you some data that we've kind of been pulling out to see if it's, see what we can do moving forward, to just get a continual type of partnership, to try to really drive after some of the core issues that are impacting our young folks, so look forward to connect with you. Do you have some follow-up? I guess back to the question around youth sports. The relationship between Baltimore City Public School System and Wrexham Parks. I know we've been having these challenges of MOU agreements, you know, with the schools that are connected to some of the Wrexham Park facility, well, to the community, they're Wrexham Parks, but to the school system, they're school system facilities. So trying to really dig through and go through that MOU problem. Have, have we completed all of those MOUs, or are we good to go for next school year?
You or Chief Washington? By the way, can I just say, I really like this new system?
Oh, thank you.
Because I can sit here and just like look at people, and they can click on, so.
Only one council member's thanked me, so I appreciate that. And actually happened to be the chair. And, and look, they love it in the back too, so give out to Chom City TV. But yes.
So we have completed most of the MOUs. I think that there were three outstanding. And what we do is we partner with Wrexham Parks when we're working through some of these MOUs, just to make sure like, if there, there were some spaces that they've given back to city schools, there are some spaces that they're holding on to, to make sure that they have the capacity and support for it. So I can definitely check back with my team.
If you could, just check with Wrexham Parks and, and just make sure all that we're in the pipeline are clearing out. Now, continuing on this Wrexham Parks thing, from a partnership perspective, I know we talked about the coordinated sports earlier. Is there any partnership coordination with Wrexham Parks as well, when we're talking about this middle school sport inclusion?
Yes, I mean, we definitely use their fields and work with them on that.
More from a programming perspective. Like, like, you know, does it carry over in the summertime?
We are meeting with them and trying to develop that, because, yes, we're gonna need as, as many people and resources for the middle school sports program, so it's still developing. I can't, there's not details right now, but we are working with them on our middle school aspect.
And for the coordinated sports, how did we come out with the, the programs that we were gonna roll out? Like, I didn't hear soccer, I don't think.
Right. I think those were the ones that we have had a history of at least some events and activities, and so it was a natural progression. And I think some of the other ones, some of our vendors have a little bit more expertise, so I think it was really just trying to use the best capacity possible.
Okay, can I schedule some time with you over the next couple of days to kind of drill down on?
Yeah, we can go a little bit deeper.
The ultimate plan. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter.
I did have a question that just came to my brain about academic integrity. I know one of the questions that I had brought up before was about how we're kind of addressing the learning gap, and I realized that you mentioned that we had a increase in tutors for math and literacy, I believe you mentioned in the presentation. Are we doing anything for our ESOL students? Or are there any additional tutoring for our ESOL students as they transition into the, into the schools?
Yes, so part of our services for our English learners is really about making sure that the schools, particularly where we have high numbers of English learners, there are more staff there to support that English language development right alongside their content. So while they're learning their math, their science, their English language arts, they're getting that English language development, and so they're able to get those services just as part of their ELL, because they'll, they'll have a specific learning plan and language goals as part of their status as an English learner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question about, you had talked about the adequate funding number, and I just want to get a sense of what we're talking about here. So on one of your slides, excuse me, I just need to figure out which one it is. It's slide number... Three?
Yep, the one that has the 342 million.
So in fiscal '17, what was our budget that then this adequacy, adequacy analysis said that we need 40, 342 million more? Do you remember?
I don't remember what the budgeted amount was then. This piece, again, as it said that it was 2017, this was part of what we used when we were advocating for Kerwin, right? So this is...
Right, so this, you use this in saying, look, we need this much more. What I'm trying to get at is like, where are we on that? Like, what, what, if, if it was a certain level at 2017, and then we needed this much more, where are we?
So just that, that estimate was from Department of Legislative Services came up with that estimate. It was not our estimate.
Okay.
And so I think now...
Well, that's important too, yeah.
Pardon?
That's important too, as to who the source was, yeah.
Yes, it was a state's own estimate. And I think now we are about at that level in terms of increase since that time, but of course, that was a 2017 number.
Sure, costs change, yeah.
So, so costs have changed since then, and requirements have changed. So again, Kerwin has a lot of additional requirements that were not part of that original estimate.
So what is the ideal number we're looking at?
Well, you know, in terms of...
I guess it's in Kerwin, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I mean, as we've indicated, there's still about a $200 million gap between the resources we receive for special education and pre-K and that amount that we need, so that, that still has to be closed. That, that gap doesn't get closed until about 2030, and so this program still gets inflated, and, and it doesn't get fully implemented until 2030. And, and of course, then Kerwin also, when you're talking about adequacy, Kerwin is just general funds, it doesn't address capital, and so there's a massive gap in terms of the capital, that's a large part of our Bradford lawsuit.
Understood, yeah. And I get that, you know, obviously, the, the amounts changed, given the various needs at the different schools, which goes back to the whole discussion around the, the indicators that we're using to be able to make the calculations. So I'm just trying to get a sense of where really we should be, and, and what that looks like, and obviously, that changes as costs change.
Well, and that, so that, that inflation of Kerwin, that, that, those increase, scheduled increases of Kerwin are really important, because the, all the requirements of Kerwin are being implemented, and so those increases are really important to be able to meet those additional requirements about teacher salary, about teacher, use of teacher time, about to meet pre-K requirements, as Dr. Santelis has mentioned earlier. So, so that's why we have this outside group, ERS, advising on what the cost is of those additional, of those additional requirements. And I know we're hearing from a number of counties that they're having, that they feel like the costs are exceeding the revenue that they're receiving.
Yeah, I mean, no question, especially on the capital side, but definitely on the, you know, everything else. The costs are, are pretty substantial. Could you, related to that, where are, what is our ranking in terms of percentage of our budget that's spent on, on, on schools? Are we la, we're not last?
Yeah, we are. So if you look at the appendix, and I didn't, I didn't, Councilwoman, I didn't use the slide because it was in the appendix, but if you go to...
The, one of the slides that you gave us?
I thought, it, it should be in the PowerPoint presentation, and it should be slide 29. And I don't know if...
I see it, I have it.
You have it? So you'll see there, even with the increases, oh, thank you. Always you do that for me. Oh, sorry, I should be going forward. Even with the increases, Baltimore City...
Oh, yeah, I see it.
See it? The percentage? I thought so, but no.
That's one more, yeah.
There it is. So you'll see, and again, we, we have increased, and that is true, but we still, in terms of education as a percentage of local budget, based on proposed budgets, we're at 17.7%. Oh, thank you. 17.7% of our budget, which is the lowest percentage spent of the jurisdictions across the state. I'll also note that the districts in red, and these are some of my colleagues, many of whom are on the Eastern Shore, who are also among the poorest counties in the state, and so we actually do talk and partner around certain funding challenges. You'll note that even among the poorest jurisdictions in the state, we still rank last. So, you know, we clearly celebrate the increase, but again, within the context of the entire state, we still spend the lowest percentage of our local budget on education compared to the rest of the state of Maryland.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it. I just wanted clarity on that, this is very helpful, thank you.
Very good. Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I wanted to talk about the sort of inter-agency collaboration issues we've seen. So following the, the mass shooting that tragically took the life of one of our Edmondson Westside High School students, and four additional students were wounded in the shooting, there was a promise made about having a robust, supportive, and sincere response, and not going back to business as usual. And I would, I would note that, you know, my team and I were pretty heavily involved in trying to navigate that response, and working with the school, and working with MONC and other agencies. But what we ended up seeing was, which was originally supposed to be like a very robust and day-long multifaceted approach, and assembly was cut down to an hour, and which partners were sort of rushed through programming and rushed to plan something that should have been like a little bit more thoughtful in there, in, in the response to what occurred. And so, like to know, like, how are we looking at these sort of, when we make these sort of big commitments to our young people in response to something that's incredibly traumatic, like losing classmates, that we are really actually serious and thoughtful about our response, and also using like the authentic networks that... and also using like the authentic networks that exist within the school, community school, the school community relationships that exist, I've been here all day, networks that are given. And, you know, we, we got a lot of feedback from families. So it wasn't just like our opinion about what was, what the response was, but we did talk to students and staff and family members who felt like the response wasn't as robust as the severity of what occurred, and it sort of didn't meet, meet it. It just felt like it was a rushed thing to kind of check boxes and get back to the normal learning space, which for both staff and students and families, that's just incredibly difficult to do when you have something so traumatic as a mass shooting that occurred a few hundred feet away from the school. And so can we talk about how we can better strengthen those partnerships? How you take that feedback and, and make adjustments? Because I'm sure if we heard that same feedback, I'm sure that, I hope it was conveyed back to folks in central office that there wasn't as robust a response as I think folks had expected, given the severity of what occurred.
Yeah. So first, I will say, one, we're more than happy to meet. I, I had not necessarily heard it that way. I had been talking, to be honest, I hadn't. So, it's definitely something that more than willing to sit down, meet about, unpack, and see what, you know, both in the, the viewpoint and experience of young people and of staff, they expected to happen over the long term that they have not yet experienced. So let me just be forthright with you about that. More than willing to sit down. I had not heard that. So we should definitely schedule some time and unpack that, especially because I think it's varied in other schools, right? So other schools, I, I wish that we're the only school that had experienced it. So, one of the first questions in my mind is, okay, what do we need to do here that we might not have, you know, that we, that we might have done in other places but didn't happen here? Also, kind of what, what was the expectation, and where did we fall? So, just kind of forthrightly, more than willing to sit down and have that conversation, and thanks for flagging it, because I did not know. I think the second piece around the collaboration, we actually have found in other spaces, which is why the consistency question that you're raising is an important one. We actually have found that partnering with MONZI over a longer period of time than we would be able to handle ourselves. Because, to put it very directly, we don't have enough staff to do the kind of long-term, in-depth work that people are looking for and need, quite frankly, in and of ourselves. And so the partnership with MONZI, with the Department of Health, right, with trying to get other professionals into support in other spaces has been effective. The other piece that I think would be interesting to unpack is what's the ongoing role of those with close proximity to communities in schools? Because what we have found, and actually, you know, this should be part of the debrief, part of what we heard around the Edmondson case, what I heard from people actually on the ground over the weekends and in, and in Edmondson Village, and actually visiting families, those people that reported back to me were incredibly concerned that the incidents that happened at Edmondson could have easily blown up if you just do networks of relationships, could have easily blown up into close to 100 related incidents of violence, based on what was coming out of that. And it was our communication with them that kept, kept us abreast of the fact that that did not happen, because we had partners who actually were in people's homes, who were doing things that frankly, we don't have the staff to do. And some of those people were on the calls that we had last night with our partners. So when I think of inter-agency response, it is agencies, again, like MONZI, like the Health Department, right, like BPD, but it is also, which is what I said to our partners last night, it is actually the informal leaders who frankly, are there when everybody else goes home. Because they're the ones that are there on weekends, they're the ones who are sitting in people's living rooms, actually saying, no, I don't think a retaliation is what we need to trigger 10 more people dying, or frankly, 40 more people dying as a result of one incident. So that piece, I had pretty close proximity to the folks who were on the ground, who were giving me those updates. I think the question you're raising is how do we reconcile what might be the community response that's coordinated with schools, and that is being informed with schools, and the ongoing response at the school level with regards to climate, with regards to supports for young people, that admittedly, you know, clearly we need to do some, some work on there. But it, it, it's clearly variable, because that has not been the case in every incident. So we should dig more deeply into what's going on at Edmondson, that people are not feeling like that, that that support is continuing in the way it should.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I heard about the meetings in living rooms. I mean, I, I got some of that feedback too, that there were meetings that were occurring with families outside of the school space. And, but again, the feedback, and I'm happy to, we don't have to go in the weeds here, on this particular incident, we will reach out to, to give more direct feedback on what we heard. But I, I just think the, I mean, in the context of the budget, I think, you know, the issues of youth violence or violence against young people is not obviously unique to Edmondson High School. And unfortunately, I mean, you have events at Central Office every year to honor young people who've lost their lives. And so we know that, like, across the board, this is something that is impacting our kids on an annual basis. And so I, I would, I think that, you know, having a more robust prioritization of staff for these types of responses, and I know, you know, money is limited, generally speaking, but the trauma, you know, hurt people, hurt people, and we know this. And I think a lot of the, the repeated violence that we see across the city involving young people, or against young people, really does speak to the, the fact that we do need to invest more in how we respond to it. And to my colleague's point about, you know, navigating conflict, that mental health piece, the, the comments I've made earlier tonight about social workers, and I'm not saying this isn't to say that you aren't trying, because I, I've seen the change in my time in office in how we are treating our young people and responding to the climate issues. And it has changed even in the time that I've been here. And I, I just think that, you know, if there's opportunities on the city end to build out these programs, I mean, we have MONZI tomorrow night, I'm happy to bring it up as, as well there. And just thinking through, how can we really grow a more uniform response across schools, so that it isn't sort of based on, you know, school by school and the relationships that exist, but more of a standard way that we approach. And obviously, you should be tailoring it to the, the neighborhood that you're in. But, you know, it shouldn't be that some schools get a more stronger response or sustained response, because that's sort of the resources they have and others don't. And I'm not saying that Edmondson, you know, is unique. Perhaps there's other schools as well that, you know, could, we could respond more robustly and more, in a more sustained way, so we don't feel like, so that the young people and the staff don't feel like there's a rush to just get back to normal. Because it's not normal to lose classmates. And it should never be something that we take lightly in any way possible. And so, I'm happy to reach out and have that conversation about what we heard.
Yeah, no, we definitely should. And I think what, what we had to realize this year is that the kind of random pulling of people every time an incident happened was insufficient. But it was what we were doing because of staffing. And so what you'll see in the budget this year is actually investment in a dedicated central response team. Because to pull a school psychologist from halfway across town, who's serving young people in one building to come to kind of the latest tragic event, was insufficient. And so, some of the budgetary investment we put, we put into this budget that you're reviewing now is actually some dedicated staff to be able to help do that and follow through on that. And I, I do agree that there needs to be, you know, some kind of uniform practice. I will say that we're one of the only jurisdictions in the state that has the level of organized response to tragedy. And, and that's not something I wanted us to specialize in, but we have. And I do think that there is a tailored approach that is different from school to school. Because what drove the violence at Patterson is related, but different than what it was at Edmondson, and is different than what it was at Murvo. So, part of, I think, the nimbleness of, of the response we're building out, and part of why we put budget money towards the response, was because we didn't want it to be uniform across the board, because it's different. And with that, you know, we still have work to do with school administrators, with school teams, because I don't think it is just always about additional resources. I can take two schools with the same resources, and the deployment of those resources is used very differently. So I know we're in a budget hearing, but I, I also have the educational leader cap still on, that it actually, believe it or not, is not always about money. Sometimes it is about the effectiveness and the coordination of the plan and what it needs to look like after. And in this case, you know, to your point, I think we just need to do a listening. Because this is the first I'm hearing, and we clearly need to do a deeper dive. And the deeper dive doesn't require resources to actually hear people. So I think it's a combination of all of that.
And just as a quick follow-up, what are the feedback mechanisms that staff and students can send to North Avenue? Is there like a post-response survey? Is there, like, how do you, beyond like, sort of like, who can get to you, what are some ways anonymously that folks can rate their response, frankly, to, or give that feedback, so that we know?
I don't think we have it organized. I mean, a staff member can, I mean, to be frank, to put it very bluntly, I didn't develop, I didn't prioritize developing a system to respond to student homicides outside of schools. I mean, let, let me just be clear about that. So there's no survey, there's no anything, because educators don't go into the work thinking, oh, wow, we need a process to survey to see how the response of kids getting shot close to campuses. It, it frankly, wasn't on the top 10 list. I think now, what you're raising, which is important, is the ability to circle back, so that, to your point, I'm not like hearing in a budget session that there's a challenge. So what I would say is, I think you've surfaced a good point. And it is the point about how do we make sure that the depth of implementation of what we promised to do is actually happening. And it's definitely something that we'll work on. But no, I don't have that, because to be frank, I did not go into this business to bury kids and to deal with shootings. I have had to work with Commissioner Harrison, who every time we have a shooting, asks me if I'm okay. Because I didn't go into this work to bury kids. So I think we're all trying to work our way through and figure out what that response looks like. And I think your point's well taken, that we're going to need to circle back in a more intentional way to see how it's actually landing in the experience of adults and children.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could we go back to the presentation and that slide?
Sorry, which one, sir?
The slide that we're on.
Oh, okay, great.
I want to enlarge it. The mouse is acting a little funny.
Okay.
There we go. All right. I, I'll say this. So, the way I read this slide, and I, I think I've seen this slide a million times, I want to make sure that I'm reading it right. This is basically the ratio of how much we're putting into education out of our local budget, divided by our local budget, and it's about 17.7%. Can we all agree to that? Is that, is that what this math tells me, right?
Yes.
All right. So data can be beneficial, but it also can be dangerous. And the concern I have with this slide is, it does not factor in all of the fixed costs, pensions, like, it doesn't factor in all the wraparound things that the city does, specifically to homeless students. It doesn't factor in any of those things into this equation. If we really want to compare ourselves on a local perspective of how much the city's putting into education, it should be literally the amount of money that we pay to education by pupil. So per pupil type of equation. Because it eliminates the fact that Baltimore City's the only municipality in the, in the, in the state that handles its roads. It eliminates all the historic things that make Baltimore City such a unique jurisdiction in comparison to all of our other counterparts. So I think it's really important that, I mean, in, in, in the back rooms of Annapolis, this is the rhetoric, and I'm not saying that anybody in this room is promoting rhetoric, but this is the type of stuff that we see from our counterparts. So, just want to be really clear, like, I don't think that this paints the right picture. And I don't know where that picture would be at, when we take our local, our local contribution to per pupil, like when we divide it by the 77,000 kids that we have in our school system. But that's the way you compare us to Prince George's County, you compare us to Wacomiko County and Dorchester County. The, no?
I mean, I, so this is looking at districts' budgets, and looking at the percentage, the amount that was given to schools out of the, out of the county's budget. So that's how this was done. I know that the state too has an analysis on this, looking at the average portion of districts' budgets or counties' budgets that went to schools, and has come up with very similar analysis. And it did do, it does attempt to do the apples and apples that you're talking about, of looking at all the different types of in-kind or pension-type investments that other jurisdictions are doing.
So when we say local budget, this is not what the city's contributing?
This is what the city, I'm sorry. This is what the city, in your case, the city, in other places, the county is contributing.
So, so this says the city's contributing X.
And, and just for clarification, this is just our local share. It's not the full contribution of what we're putting towards different programs at school.
Nor is it, for, nor is it for other counties.
Yeah, but nor is it for other districts.
Not for other counties either.
So that, that, we are not an outlier in that. Because when this funding comes, no other jurisdiction, additional dollars are added.
Dr. Sanz-Luis, I just wanted to clarify what you said. You said, this is our local contribution. You mean it's our, our state-required MOE?
That's correct. Local share. Yep.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. President.
So it, again, it doesn't factor in all that we're doing. But what I'm saying is, this is a really, it's really dangerous for us to continue to perpetuate this and not compare apples to apples. Because-
I think it is apples to apples, because other jurisdictions have those other contributions as well. And so when the state has done those apples to apples to include pension and so on, they come up with the same analysis. In past years, I don't know the current number, in past years, the district, the state average for, for county contributions has been 34%. At the time, this was years ago, at the time, at that time, Baltimore City's was 13%. Now, I think the district, the state average is probably higher, and Baltimore City's was 17%. But it has been consistent. This has been a consistent issue.
No, I consistently see this slide, and I guess the issues, the same issue always comes up. But-
I just, you know, look, I'm not saying anything but that we, on every measure, still come out as the lowest percentage of the local budget given to education. What I'm not saying, right, is that the percentage that the city gives, for example, to homeless youth generally, may be higher, right? That, that is true, but it's not education. If the argument is, how much does the city devote to each of its young people, and you want to add those additional expenses in, then I think that that's, that's a different figure. And it could be one that's valid. And if I were sitting in your seat, it might be one that I would do. However, I would still assert, when it comes to education, specifically as one portion of what is devoted to a young person in a city, that bucket is still the lowest for Baltimore City. Now, and, and you could make the argument that's because you're giving more to youth programming, or you're giving more to homeless youth, or more to, I don't know, anything else with youth. But this is specifically around education.
I, I personally feel the true definition of what this slide is attempting to do is divide the allocation by the number of students in the district. That is the comparison. It's not everything else that's factored into our budget, which is not apples to apples, which is oranges to oranges. The, the, the common denominator are kids. How much are we putting into each child's education? So a way that this chart should be set up is, what are we allocating, and how many kids we allocating it to, and what that ratio is? This is the argument that I had in Annapolis, and I'll continue to have it. I just didn't know that it was us that was also utilizing the same slide.
Yep. Well, I will say that we have been very vocal in defending Baltimore City in terms of the fact that there is no tax base, that there's a difference in terms of the tax base, that Baltimore City is all the government buildings, has all the hospitals, has all the universities-
the universities by design.
Yeah, we, we're going to agree on that. I want to really talk about what we disagree on. What I'd be interested to see is, if you guys have access to it, if not, we'll do it. But the local allocation by the amount of pupils, and I will be interested to see we're right. We might, still might rank dead less. I don't know. But to me, that's the fair way of comparing what we're putting in to each child in Baltimore City in comparison to Chiltenham, Dorchester, or Wacomico, or Dorchester, you know, whatever. But thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. President. I'm not sure who I agree with, but-
Well, that's a, that's a problem for you.
Councilwoman Ramos.
I'm fine.
Councilman Burnett?
Yeah, I just had one more, one more question. So we had a pretty extensive discussion around the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program that I passed out of the council and is currently being implemented by Baltimore City Fire, OEM and Police. Can you speak to your relationship to the program with the work has been, you know, with the communication that you've had with the Fire and Police Department over implementation of the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program?
Yeah, Councilman, I would say we should get back to you for the specifics because that, the details of that, I mean, I can give you an overview and I'm certain Dr. Dubrowski can as well. But I think for the specifics around implementation, we should actually connect you again with Kumasi Vines. Because he is the one who's charged with the actual implementation and we're happy to follow up with you on that one.
Okay. And I, Mr. Chair, sorry, I was going to do a committee request. I didn't want to get it lost. And so I was just looking for an update from Kumasi Vines about the implementation of the ordinance that we passed through the council, the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program. In particular, just where, where the implementation stands as it pertains to the city schools side of that partnership. And just as a reminder, it's a partnership between OEM, police, fire, and city schools. Though we couldn't put city schools in the bill for obvious reasons, but there is still that relationship. And so just trying to figure out where, where that stands from city schools' perspective.
Nate, you good?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions? All right. I have one question that I've been saving for the end. This will be the last question of the night. Can you please walk me through the entire timeline of Kerwin slash Blueprint with respect to what our MOE is for this year? I know there's been discussion over the past couple of months about what that figure was expected to be, but I think this discussion goes back a year or two. So can you walk us through that from your perspective? I've asked the city administrator's office to do the same and found that conversation to be very helpful in me understanding this.
Okay. If you could bring up slide 27. Okay. Oh, you, what does she have to do? Oh, move, to 27. One more. Okay. So, so when the, when, to your point, Committee Chair Casello, when HB 1300 passed, the LS did an analysis at that time in 2020 that updated the fiscal projections for each school system, I'm sorry, each county or city and the amount that they would have to contribute. For FY '24, they estimated in 2020 that that, that would be an increase of $86 million that the city would have to contribute. And if you, so you see that in the bottom of the slide, the 86 million. And, sorry, I can't see that far. So then, more recently, of course, those were early projections. A lot of things changed. There's a lot of factors that go into the formula. But then in January 2022, DLS also did an estimate of the local fiscal impact of implementing the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. And you see there in FY 2024, the estimate for Baltimore City was 373 million, which is not exactly where we are, but is close. I think we're at 390, we're 392. So it's in the ballpark of what ended up being. So that was, January 2022 was projected that would be 373 million. If you'll recall, there was an effort in the budget by Delegate McIntosh in the Appropriations Committee to delay the impact of the cost to Baltimore City because she knew the impact was significant. And so in the first year of Kerwin, you see, you'll see that there is a, there was a significant increase by the state. State like took the larger share of the, of the cost of Kerwin in the first year. But in the second year, then that's when the impact from, from Kerwin was more impacted in the city. And so this, this estimate of January 2022 is after that, that legislative work to delay the impact of Baltimore City until 2024.
So when did, you mentioned the number 373, and then I think our actual MOE for this year is 393?
392.
392. When did you find out that it was 392 instead of 373 and from whom?
Do you know the answer to that?
In addition to those preliminary estimates that Chief Perkins Cohen went through, I'd say we were fully aware of it in the February numbers that came from the state.
The actual 392.
Of the actual 392, correct.
That's helpful. And who from the state? From our city delegation or from the governor's office or?
Forgive me. MSD sends it out to all the jurisdictions at the same time.
What does, what does MSD send you?
MSD sends a, an Excel spreadsheet with 12 or 15 tabs, cut different ways, and a PDF of the same thing. And in the Excel spreadsheet, maybe it has 20 tabs, it has all the jurisdictions and it has the formulas. It's, it's pretty definitive, although it, it isn't final till it's final. The 392 number, I believe, was provided in the February numbers.
Can you, does that include some type of written narrative or is it just a raw data spreadsheet?
It actually conspicuously lacks a narrative. It, it's sent out kind of working level to working level, C attached, frankly. There, there are other narratives at different times, but, and I'm more than happy to forward you that, you know, that document. Yeah, there's, there's no narrative.
I wish I could write an email about 392 million dollars and just put C attached.
Well-
No, no, I, I, I'm not trying to, I, I just, I'm not trying to, I don't intend to point any blame or wrongdoing or, or any malfeasance at, at anyone. I, I just, again, if it's a spreadsheet you guys get every year and you know to look at tab 15 on the 23rd row, then you know what you're looking for. Is that spreadsheet something that you could share with the committee?
Yes.
Thank you. Nate, can you get that down? Is that something you could share with us by Tuesday?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I was just curious about the timeline and spent a lot of time thinking about the uncertainty for the city as to what we were required to contribute and the pressures that that puts on our general fund budget. And just been thinking a lot about it. So I really appreciate it. That's helpful. Dr. Santalisa, want to thank you and your senior team for joining us, staying through the evening with us. Really appreciate everything you do to support our young people each and every day. Same goes to all of our faculty and staff at, at each of our schools across the district. Thank you. Have a great evening. We're in recess. We'll be reconvening tomorrow for the ordinance of estimates at 9:00 AM with Rack and Parks. Thank you.